Thank you, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded by the City Council and GCTV-17. I'm sorry if folks could settle down. This meeting is being recorded by the City Council and GCTV-17. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. All right. In accordance with MGLC 30A subsection 20G, no person shall address a building of the public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person -- sorry, remove the person from the meeting. Can I get a roll call of members, please?
Counselor Golub?
Here.
Vice President Gwynn?
Here.
Counselor Disorga?
Here.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Bullock?
Here.
President Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Lepiensky?
Here.
Counselor Mayo? Counselor Mayo?
Just let's keep going.
I see that your hand is raised.
Counselor Mayo, can you hear us?
Okay. Well, it's not embarrassing. Let's keep going.
Counselor Mayo is attending virtually. He's by show of -- so he cannot hear us.
Is he on mute?
Counselor Mayo, you are not on mute.
Clerk Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Liz Gilman just texted and she can't hear either.
Okay. Great.
The last time this happened.
Is that better, Counselor Mayo?
You want to play with it? The last time this happened.
We can hear you, Counselor Mayo. Can you hear us?
Can you hear us? No, I'm guessing no. What did you do? Can I finish the roll call and then we'll go from there?
Counselor Mayo is attending virtually. We are having a little bit of communication difficulties. Counselor Healy?
Here.
Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Counselor Forgé?
Here.
Counselor Ricketts?
Present.
Counselor Toranzo?
Here.
Madam President, you have a full council.
Do we want to give it a moment? Next up, we're going to have communications from the superintendent's schools and the school committee, so if they want to slowly make their way up to the table, hopefully we can get this fixed before. I want to make sure that everyone participating at home is able to hear too. Pledge of Allegiance, yeah?
Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm sorry. We are going to do the pledge of allegiance, but they're already in place right here. So this is voluntary.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. After the pledge of allegiance is approval of minutes, we don't have any minutes to approve. Let's go ahead and launch into communications from the schools.
Good evening. I'm the vice chair, and you've got me tonight instead of the chair because she had other obligations. So not much happened in the -- at the school committee meeting this past week, but I did want to share with you that we got a donation from the Greenfield High School class of 1954. Seven people donated $304 for the Greenfield Elementary School Literary Program because they think reading should be -- is so important. We got a lovely, lovely handwritten letter in cursive. So we're very grateful for that donation, and we also are getting a donation of 400 dictionaries from the Greenfield Elks, and it's going to the -- every third grader will have a dictionary. So this just plays into that it takes a village to raise a child. And now I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
One of the other things that we wanted to share, for those of you who didn't get to watch the meeting, was that our middle school physical education teacher, John Hickey, is also our softball coach, and he was identified as the MIAA 2021-2022 Coach of the Year for Softball, which the girls -- the softball team won the state championship this past June, and it was wonderful to be able to recognize Coach Hickey, and he was given a commendation, I guess I'll call it, from the school committee recognizing his accomplishments. So we're very happy, very proud of that. We're also working with Athena from the city, the grant writer, to do Safe Roots to School Grant, so that we can work with DPW around some sidewalk improvements, so that grant application is in process. So -- and as you probably all know, the time of year for inclement weather adjustments to the school schedule has started. Unfortunately, we almost had an issue this morning, but we didn't. But just a reminder that it's the time, and we could potentially need to delay or close schools. So I work very closely with Marlowe. We talk very early on mornings when there are weather-related issues. So we share the goal of making sure all of our students and staff get to school safely. So, you know, I tend to have somewhat of a conservative approach working with him, so that we'd rather err on the side of caution and safety. I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Before I turn to my fellow counselors to ask for questions, I want to see if we can get Doug Mayo to weigh in on his roll call vote, because we believe the technical problems might be resolved. Counselor Mayo, are you with us? Did we want to check the audio some other way, or should we move on? So we can ask Ms. Gilman if she can hear us? She messaged me. Director Gilman, do you hear us?
I hear you on the Zoom.
Counselor Mayo, can you hear us?
Yes, I can now, yes.
Yeah, the mic at the table is really garbled at the table in the front.
Okay, so you can hear me now?
I can hear you well. I can hear Sheila well and Kathy well.
Okay.
I couldn't hear the speakers very well.
I can hear -- so I can hear everybody?
Sorry, everybody?
No, no need to apologize. I can hear everybody through Clerk Scott's laptop. My concern is the folks that are in attendance. Can all of you hear folks talking on this laptop?
Yes.
Folks in the front row can hear. The second row looks good. Okay. All right. If anybody needs something to be repeated, just try and get my attention, and we'll try and relay that information. We'll work through it the best we can. All right. Do any of my counselors have any questions for schools? All right, you're getting off easy tonight after your potential snow day.
I actually have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just thank you for being here tonight, and I guess the most broad open-ended of questions. I, as a new counselor, I'm really grappling with how to support the school committee and the teachers and IAs to settle a contract, and I'm wondering if you could speak to that and what you would hope for from city councilors to be able to do to support settling a good contract, so that we can keep the jobs competitive and really do the best for our kids in the
So that's a lot more broad than I'm comfortable speaking to. It is the school committee's absolute desire to have contracts settled in good faith, and I know there have been some conversations happening between school committee members, city council members. What I would say is that, as the superintendent, my role is, at the end of the day, whatever resources I have available to work with the school committee to negotiate a contract, I will do that with the resources that I have. So I'm the CEO, so to speak, so the conversations about, you know, the contract stabilization, all of the other funding sources, I will leave that to the committee members. And at the end of the day, you know, I certainly desire to have a fair, settled contract with all of our units, so.
Thank you. Did anyone else have anything for our superintendent or our vice chair of the school committee? All right, seeing none.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I keep missing you guys.
Sorry. Will there be anyone here later to answer questions? If any questions come up about Esser funds or financial information?
It would probably be better if you asked those questions now.
And I apologize, this is going to be kind of broad, but in general, what we're hearing is that the schools have enough Esser funds to cover everything, including teacher contracts. That seems to be that there's nothing needed from the city side, and so I don't know if you can address that, or at least address what kind of reserves you have in Esser funds and how they're spent?
Sure. I can speak to some of the Esser funding. Specifically, I think it's the Esser III grant that's up for discussion. Right now, in -- first of all, I know there was a question asked about can or cannot Esser funds be used for salaries. They can, but we're, right now, allocating them for other things. That doesn't just means this is the spending plan right now. We currently have nine positions being funded out of the Esser III grant for this school year. We have -- so there is a capital request that I have submitted. It is one. I have submitted for one item, and it is the balance of funding needed to replace rooftop energy recovery units on the roof of the middle school. I submitted a grant through the Department of Education. We had an allocation of about $340,000. Don't quote me, it's about that. So I submitted the capital request for the balance needed for that project. I also built it into the Esser III grant in case it's not funded through capital, because we're at risk of those units failing. I have the balance of our phone replacement upgrade project that is in that grant. That's about $14,000, certainly nothing substantial. We have a rather large allocation in there for security upgrades, which, in a public setting, I prefer to not be too detailed about. We have a fair amount of money in the grant for technology upgrades, including all of our interactive whiteboards, desktop computers, Chromebooks, basically any -- anything that plugs in almost, we need to look at renewing. We have things going end-of-life very quickly, meaning software updates won't be installed on our computers, which is a cybersecurity risk. We won't be able to do software updates, so some new programs won't run. So we need to address those. I don't think the technology updates are anything new to the council members in terms of hearing about those needs. We have about $400,000 budgeted for updated instructional materials. We have some textbooks at our high school, for example, that are 10, 15 years old. We are in Desperate Natives math materials for the high school. Karen Patno, the assistant superintendent, has been fantastic about writing grants to get instructional materials, but unfortunately, the new round of the grants for high-quality instructional materials support implementation but don't allow the same spending for new materials like it did for our elementary literacy and math materials. So we needed to budget for some of that.
I'm sorry, Superintendent, can I get you to scoot your microphone a little bit closer to your mouth? We have some folks at home that can't hear as well.
Yes. I'm scared it's going to be too close, and then we'll have feedback, but I guess we'll figure it out. So we have instructional materials in there. So I feel like we've done a nice job allocating the money to support district needs, but can something come out of it? Yes. I would prefer not to take staff out of it, for sure, because we're -- we have a need for the staff people. I know there's conversation about school choice. Objectively, what I will say is, the last time contracts were settled, about $650,000 from our school choice account was used to settle the contracts the last time. Typically with school choice, what the best practice is, is that you are not using the current year's revenue from school choice, meaning that you have some available, much like your -- we have microphone issues. I have an issue. Okay, we'll try this one. Much like your stabilization accounts, school choice is an account that is for schools to use for extraordinary expense. So at this stage, we are using this year's revenue to pay this year's expenses, so that is not best practice. Could what we have in school choice be used for salaries? Yes. And then that would leave us with no revenue for extraordinary expenses if they came up. Trying to think of what some of the other questions are. Circuit breaker, we have money in our circuit breaker revolving account, but that can be used for special education. There are limits on what can be used, what can be paid for out of that. Same with our transportation revolving, that has to be used for transportation. So we do have some revolving accounts that have money in them, but they're limited in what we can do. One of the other things that is a fairly new conversation coming from the state is that, right now, we are looking at the potential for a 14% increase in special education tuitions for students who are in out-of-district placements. Historically, those increases that are approved by the state have been 1% to 2.5%, and right now, we are being told to anticipate 14%. So where I am sending letters to legislators, we are, you know, doing -- there is a political response to that, but we also have to look at that. So that's -- I think that answers some of the questions that I know of. Does that help?
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Is there anybody else who had any questions? Okay. This time, I'm really going to let them come now.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have communications from the mayor, and I think -- so in the interest of time, if we can kind of limit that to what's on the agenda for tonight, I think that would help get us to -- because I know we've got a big presentation coming up soon.
Good evening, city councilors. So our city of Greenfield has had a great week. We broke ground on the fire station on Monday, and thank you for those of you, councilors, who were able to be there. We really appreciate it. And then today, we celebrated the sale of Wilsons, a great partnership between Mass Development, TCB, otherwise known as the Community Builders, and the city of Greenfield in order to, one, secure our anchor building and keep it for appropriate retail on the ground floor. I think if any of you have caught up with the news, if not, I'll explain as best I can, that the Franklin Community Co-op will occupy the first floor in the cellar of the Wilsons Building. So they will be able to expand their grocery offerings, provide an additional number of jobs. I believe they employ now 100 people. They will -- are planning to increase that by 20%, and we will retain a wonderful asset that's been in Greenfield for 30 years and has been on Main Street for a number of those 30 years. So we will have a -- we will retain our grocery store downstairs. I mean, I'm sorry, downtown. And then in the upper stories, TCB will create housing for workforce and income-adjusted, otherwise known as mixed-income housing. It is a public-private partnership at its best. The city of Greenfield was able to participate to a certain degree by contributing to the amount of money it would take to purchase the building. And by the way, I do want to thank the O'Neill family for their part in this, and recognize that this is a great way to solidify both their legacy in the city of Greenfield, as well as keep creating a more vibrant city center, which is, I think, the goal of all of us. Going back to our participation in the city of Greenfield, we were able to contribute $300,000 from this -- well, it came from a fund, an account, that could only be used for housing. It was the result of a partial sale of a long-term lease-in perpetuity, so that means long before me, that was put in place for the Mill House. So we were able -- and according to the terms of how the Mill House was funded, through federal and state grants, any income realized by the city from that had to go towards housing. So we'd been sitting on that for a while, wondering what was the best use of that, and when this project came along, it was very clear to Community and Economic Development Director MJ Adams and myself that this was a really, really wonderful opportunity to also participate in this. The city of Greenfield does not own that building, so don't worry about that. It's owned by Mass Development and TCB. So it's a wonderful -- it's a really good project. I look forward to seeing it unveil, and it's just something that I set out to do when I became mayor, and that is to create more opportunities for downtown Greenfield to be a vibrant city center, and also to create more housing in downtown Greenfield. Also, we have a new finance director on board as of the 21st. So we are delighted to welcome a woman by the name of Diana Schindler to the position of Finance Director. She comes -- she is a local woman, but she comes to us from right now -- well, recently resigned from the town of Hopedale as town administrator. She has been interim town administrator in Deerfield and town administrator in the town of Orange as well. She has an accounting background, and we are really looking forward to welcoming her next week. Liz and Angelica will provide the transitional information that she needs to know, so we get to hang on to Liz for a little bit longer, but eventually you will get to retire. So we're excited to welcome her, and we hope that she'll have an opportunity to come before you in a meeting or two from now, just to introduce her and to have her be available to say hello to all of you. I do want to take this opportunity to mention and praise all around what a great job the people who put on our elections did last week. As you all know, there were some difficulties with that. Quinn Jakes and Kat?
Chilick.
Chilick, thank you. Quinn is the new Assistant City Clerk, not new to Greenfield. She was in a payroll position before that, payroll clerk position before that.
Jay Quinn's.
Jaquis.
Jay Quinn's. Jim Quinn, Jay Quinn's.
Okay. I thought that's what I said, but maybe I didn't. Whatever. And Kat is the administrative clerk. So they were at the high school, making sure that everything was done properly there. City Hall staff volunteered to work in the clerk's office. That includes Chief of Staff Danielle Leterno, who kind of ramrodded that show and was there a good portion of the day, and was relieved by other members of the city hall and the mayor's office, who took turns, while Quinn and Kat were at the high school. So we had a wonderful election, and it went off without any hitches. Capital budget meetings will begin on Friday with department heads presenting to the Capital Improvement Committee, and I want to also announce a program that I have put together out of the mayor's office called Dialogues Across Differences, a community conversation. There will be three meetings around how to have some difficult conversations around some of the issues that we've been facing: race, gender, a number of issues. They will be facilitated by two very accomplished professionals, Tanisha Araina, who is the Executive Director of A Rise for Social Justice in Springfield, and Jack Patricey of Growing a Heart. These two women do this work all over the country, but particularly in this area, and these meetings will be on Zoom from 5:30 to 7:30. The dates are 11/28, 12/5, and 12/19. And I would invite all of you and members of the public to attend any one or all of all three of the meetings. I'm looking forward to this as a step in the right direction. Just a quick one, the RFP for the First National Bank Building will go out later this week. Actually, I think it's actually later this month, on the 30th. That's a GRA-owned building. A grant provided us with a consultant to write an RFP to our specifications for, I hope, finally, to find somebody who will take care of that wonderful treasure in downtown Greenfield. And last but not least, but on your agenda for this evening, I want to address the important work that you have ahead of you later this evening regarding the transfers from free cash, especially, of course, the one that will allow us to reduce the tax rate, but also capital stabilization, contract stabilization. These are two very important things that we need to see get funded. I look forward to your conversations this evening amongst yourselves around that. But I do want to say that on your first reading, if I'm not mistaken, this evening is also an additional $100,000 that I have asked for from you folks to be added to contract stabilization. So which will then, if voted, I guess in January or December? So which will then, if voted, I guess in January or December, when voted, will bring the balance in contract stabilization to $470,779. So that is something that I think is an important thing to contribute. I'm happy to be able to bring that forward to you, not this meeting, except for the first reading, but for your vote, hopefully in December. And I think that's about it for the evening.
Thank you. I want to start. Can you remind me the new Finance Director's name? I didn't catch it.
Diana Schindler.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody else have any questions? Yes.
Yes.
Oh, Councilor Mayo, do you want to go before me?
You, you raised your hand first, so I'll recognize you first and then Councilor Mayo.
Sure. So Mayor, congratulations on getting a new Finance Director. As you know, I've been asking.
Yeah, could you scoot a little? Yeah.
Well, okay, how about now?
Better.
Mayor, thank you for getting a new Finance Director. As you know, I've been excited to see that happen, and hopefully it'll make everything flow more smoothly. On the subject of the Clerk's Office, I just want to give a shout out to my fellow Counselor Ginny Disorga, who also worked there. It was not only City Hall staff. And I had a specific question, but I've forgotten it, so if I remember it, I'll come back to it.
That's fine. All right, Councilor Mayo, you are next, and then Vice President Quinn.
Okay. This is the first time for me to do this. I'm doing this via phone, and I had some quite difficulty trying to use the passcode and pound sign and enter everything all at the same time to get me to here, but I'm glad you can hear me. So my question is for the mayor. The first time that I heard at the unveiling or the unveiling of the new, or the digging of the dirt at the fire station a couple of days ago, we were told that we had a grant from the USDA, I think it was around $900,000. And prior to that, it's the first time that I heard that we got any money from the USDA. I'm glad that we got it, but it's the first time that I, as a councilperson or councilman, have heard that we received this money. And at the last council meeting, we were told that, that we absolutely needed $500,000 from the City Council to be approved by the City Council, or else we couldn't, we couldn't build the fire station. And all of a sudden, I hear at the ceremony a couple of days ago, that the USDA gave us $900,000. I'd like to know why we weren't told about that prior to a couple of days ago.
Yeah, I, well, your fellow counselors are answering the question as well, but since, I mean, I can certainly do that, Councilor Mayo. Number one, what you did last time, well, first of all, the $987,000 was a grant from the USDA, and at, I believe, the last meeting, if not that one, the one before, you all voted, and I don't recall, perhaps you weren't in attendance at that meeting, but the City Counselors voted to accept that grant. So that's not the first time, it may have been the first time you heard about it, but it is not the first time that the City Counselors have heard about it. Secondly, the $500,000 was basically a, I may have this wrong in the sequence, but a rescinding of $500,000 that had been given to the city by the, the Library Foundation to offset the borrowing for the library and to re-apportion that or re-appropriate that $500,000 as one part of a financial package to get us over the hump that we had in the deficit that we had in funding the fire station. So once again, very grateful for the votes that were taken for that. So it was one part of a, of a group of financing, including that $987,000 grant.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Next I had Vice President Quinn, and was there anyone else? And then Counselor Healy.
Mayor, I just want to build off what you mentioned about Election Day. If you know my way and just ask the people that work for me, I don't ever thank people for doing their job, but I thank people when they do something that's above and beyond. And everyone that was involved in that couple of days did a fantastic job to pull that out, regardless of what department they were from and who they worked for. It didn't matter. We saw the panic, well, not physically, I felt it in reading Kathy's panic leading up to that day. And I could tell, I said, she's either, you know, so incapacitated, or she's bawling as she's texting me.
I bet.
You know, I could just tell that it was that kind of moment, and everyone pulled together, and Sheila and I were involved in the conversation, trying to make sure it was covered. And I'm like, I will go to elections, I won't know what I am doing, but I'd be happy to be there and stand like I do know what I'm doing. But when I walked in that door that night, and I spent a few minutes at the table with Quinn, and I, I just felt like people came together and it just went so well. And that is such a positive thing in such a negative atmosphere. So it was really nice to see everyone come together and pull that off. And I think it needed someone to say that, and I'm glad you did, and I'm glad everyone's brought it up, because it was a good moment for Greenfield in a crisis.
It certainly was, and I have to tell you that I have been approached by just members of the community who came in to vote that day and who, who were so pleased with how well the elections went. So again, thank you to all who were involved in making sure that we had another good election in the city of Greenfield.
Yes, I'm going to, I'm going to let Clerk Scott.
So to clarify for everybody, the Saturday before elections, I tested positive for COVID and could not go to the elections, couldn't do anything. And people from the Mayor's Office and people from other departments, Ginny happened to assist more in September for the September election, but still thank you. So your new Assistant City Clerk and your new Assistant Administrative Assistant busted it. I mean, they were just on point, fantastic. Yeah, they might have sent me a text asking a question, but they were the ones, boots on the ground, kicking tuchus. And I just wanted everyone to have a clearer picture on what the kumbaya was going on here. But that's all. Thank you, everybody who assisted in any way.
Yes, Counselor Healy was next.
Thank you. Great news on Wilson. That's, that's amazing news. I just had one follow-up question on that, and it's in regards to the $300,000, right? So I'm just wondering, with the $300,000, that's, that's probably going to the property owner for redevelopment of that property. Is there some sort of contract that's going to be in place to mandate that they, it's used for mixed income housing for a certain amount of years? Or is it, we're giving them money and?
No, it will, it will go directly to TCB for the housing piece of it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Were there any other questions? Yes, Counselor Gullub, and then, then Counselor Ricketts.
I actually don't have a question. I have another thank you. I just want to thank you for your letter to the state delegation in support of the home equity reform.
For sure.
It feels really good to be on the same page of that issue, and I'm grateful for that.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. What was especially good was to receive almost immediate response back from Representative Whipps and Senator Commerford on that. So it was a good, it was a good thing. And I have to thank my, my good pal Albert back there for asking me to do it. I would have done it anyway, but, you know, he gave me the push that we needed.
Thank you. So next I had Counselor Ricketts, then was there anyone else who wanted to get in line?
Okay, this is just really quick, you know, thinking of all the press releases and everything that had been going out, and thank you for everything. And I see for our new police dog, Frank Roach, and I know it means a lot to people who've been around for a long time and newer people may not know, but it meant the world to see that. So thank you for that as well.
Sure. Well, I didn't have anything to do with that. That was all on the Greenfield Police Department and their, their love of Frank Roach and his family and all that they've contributed. I did like the idea of the dog, though, and he's really, really cute. And if you have an opportunity to see him someday, or feel him, or pet him, or do all those things, by all means, take, take that opportunity.
All right, thank you. Did any other counselors have any other questions? Counselor Lapienski, did you remember what you wanted to ask? Nope? All right. I'm sure it'll come to you in the morning.
You know how to find me, Counselor Lapienski.
No, no, thank you.
Well, except at 3:00 in the morning.
In the morning lately.
All right, so, moving on. So next we have, we have a presentation from the assessors, and I was wondering if this makes more sense, and I would, I would need a motion, if it makes more sense to do public comment so that we can have communications from the assessors and then the public hearing together on the agenda? If we were going to do that.
So moved.
So if we were going to do that, someone would have to move to suspend the rules of procedure?
So moved.
Would counselors be in favor of moving that? No.
I.
Jasper, already counsel Lapienski moved it.
It's too important. They need to know it.
Right.
They need to understand.
We have a motion on the table.
So there's a motion. Yes, Vice President Quinn?
Can we just clarify what you're, what you're recommending we do in more specifics? So there's not a concern to what you're suggesting?
So what I was suggesting is it feels a little disjointed to me that we go from the assessors to public comment back to the public hearing about what the assessors are presenting on. That just made more sense to me. But if we don't want to do it that way, we can, we don't have to vote in favor of this motion. Yes.
Actually, I would be opposed to doing that. The assessors are here, the assessors are here this evening to make a presentation. I really feel that we need to listen to their presentation before public comment, which could take a couple of hours. I don't think it's really fair that we ask them to stay that long. We also need to be very mindful of the order in which we do things this evening in regard to the assessors' presentation and setting the tax rate and voting the $600,000 to offset the taxes. All of those things have to be done in a certain order. Public comment is, is public comment, so I just think the public can comment on their presentation. I, I don't see it necessary to move it up. My opinion. Thank you very much.
No, that's fine. Do counselors want to vote on it, or, I mean, I don't want to take up tons of time. Go ahead, Counselor Gullub.
I just, I, I'm thinking this through. I'm not sure if they're able to stay, and I appreciate the concern for their time. I just know for me, been working to wrap my mind around it, and having the presentation at the same time as the vote would be a helpful, would be helpful, but I'm not, again, you're right, I don't know how long public comment will be, but that would be a reason to shift it in my mind.
Do counselors want to vote on the motion?
Yes.
Sure.
Do any in favor of moving the order?
Remove.
Right.
I think what.
Here, this has been the rule. That's the motion.
Whatever we do, let's do it.
Yeah, okay. Do you want to ask for a roll call?
Yes, I'm going to ask for a roll call, though. Counselor Gullub?
Yes.
Vice President Quinn?
No.
Counselor Disorga?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Lapienski?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo? Let's come back to Counselor Mayo, just in case, he's having technical problems. Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
No.
Counselor Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Toranzo?
No.
Okay, let me see. Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Thank you. Does the president wish to vote? What's the, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes. One, two, three, four, five, no. Okay, I don't, I don't need to vote. It looks like the motion passes. Okay. All right, I'll grab the comment sheet.
Point of clarification, the motion was for suspending the rules, like suspending the agenda, right?
The motion was to suspend the rules.
Correct. All right, that's what I was making sure.
Was there a second part, any?
No.
Okay. Right. The motion, the motion was to suspend the rules to flip-flop the presentation from the assessors and public comment. Public comment is first. Let's see. Greenfield. All right, first I have Ryan Whitney and then Pocky Whelan. Those are the two online so far. Three-minute timer. Yes, please.
My name's Ryan Whitney. I live in Greenfield, Mass. Here to speak on the affair assessment and the people who do the assessments. I live on Chapman Street near many of Ruggeri's rental properties. The rental across the street from me had workers with building materials coming in and out for weeks. The front door was open. I could see it was down to the studs. There was no building permit. I noticed the City Council who notified, I notified the City Council, who notified the building inspector. He saw exactly what I saw, a big renovation being done without a building permit. The owner is the Chair of the Board of the Assessors, who was told to stop work and get a building permit. This is not the first time work has been done without a permit. The Ruggeri family owns many rental properties in our city. I wonder how fairly all of those properties, homes are assessed, and what work has been done inside of all of them. How many others have extra rooms or even apartments that are not recorded? The Chair of the Board of Assessors knows that the property value is based on accurate reporting of property conditions. Perhaps we no longer need to wonder why our taxes are so high and why the tax burden is not fairly shared. Rules should be applied to everyone. Thank you.
Okay, Pocky, I'm sorry, is it Pocky Whelan or Whelan?
Whelan.
Whelan.
Yes.
And if you would say your name and address for the record, please, and then I'll have Kate Pousat next. Kate Pousat Scarborough next.
Pocky Whelan, 54 High Street, Greenfield. I feel like I'm part of this kumbaya part, because I came here to encourage you to, to resolve, to urge the Mass General Court to pass H.R. 3053, but it seems like the mayor has already asked for that to happen, and, and I see smiling faces agreeing to that, allow you to get on to that really hard stuff, the money stuff. But just to thank you, because when you resolve to urge that passage, which seems like that's the spirit of this, this City Council, that what you're doing is you are putting a little more weight on the moral arc of the universe and to bend it a little further and harder toward justice. So thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Kate Pousat Scarborough.
My name's Kate Pousat Scarborough, 141 Montague City Road. Like Pocky, I also came to speak about H. 3053. So again, thank you. So again, thank you for urging the passage of that resolution. When I heard about that, it just made no common sense and no ethical sense and really seemed to be profiting off people who were struggling. So, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move to folks online. I've got John McGee.
Hi there, my name is John McGee, 14 Green Street. Counselors, as always, thank you for the work you put in tonight. I'll be brief and highlight just one concern regarding the police department that hasn't gotten much attention yet. That is GPD's repeated willingness to violate federal labor law on behalf of Bay State Franklin Hospital against their nurses and the nurses' union. The 2018 National Labor Relations Board found that Bay State has routinely unlawfully interfered with union activity by their nurses. Bay State has also routinely hired GPD to interfere with nurses' lawful union activities, such as union reps accompanying nurses in the building. GPD officers have threatened union reps with arrest for this, and officers have also manhandled union reps and blocked them from moving freely despite the protections afforded to those reps by labor law. This is one more data point where officers in GPD have not been held accountable for their actions and where the leadership of GPD has not had to answer for officers violating the law. In her op-ed from yesterday, the mayor cites the importance of having good jobs in Greenfield that pay decent wages. Decent wages don't just happen. Unions and collective bargaining and even strikes have been the key for regular people getting better working conditions. We can look at the police, too, and see just how good of a compensation package their unions have won for them over time. Such the police are routinely in the top earners among municipal employees. We do need good jobs in this town, so we also need strong unions. We also need a full-service hospital, and the nurses are our best allies for keeping as many services as possible in our community. We should not be using city resources and personnel for union busting. At the very least, given that Bay State has repeatedly been found to violate labor law, GPD should not accept any work related to Bay State's labor negotiations. And given GPD's disregard for labor law as it applies to other people's unions, really, they should not be allowed to police labor strikes at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Sean Thomas. Oh, are you here, do you hear someone talking?
So I, I put messages in letting people know that if they want to speak, they can enter their name in.
Thank you. Can we get your name and address for the record, please?
Sean Thomas from 100 Maple. I was wondering regarding the home equity issue, is there a chance that's, a portion of the council could act as a committee towards reviewing homes that are about to go to IRA down south? 10 days perhaps before it happens, just to give it an overview, a check and balance, a little audit, to make sure that it's not something that's really being pulled under, you know, rug under people's feet like Mitch and Joan, or myself, or anyone else throughout the community that's had a little bit of trouble through the lockdowns? If something of that sort could be made, not part of the judicial branch, but, you know, a part of the council or a committee chosen to give that file one more review before it happens, before it goes to IRA. Thank you.
Thank you. So next I have Jo Marie Jackson and Mitchell. I don't know if you wanted to share your time or if you meant to sign up separately? Oh, okay. Well, you are next on the list.
Greetings. Members of the City Council of Greenfield, Massachusetts. We are Mitch Spate and Jo Marie Jackson, real property owners of Two Chestnut Hill in the city of Greenfield, county of Franklin, state of Massachusetts. The city of Greenfield took title to our home and sent a sheriff to our front door on two, two separate occasions to tell us that we were now tenants in our own home, facing eviction. We had to hire a lawyer to help us negotiate with the city. We managed to pay all our taxes, plus interest, plus legal and collective costs to avoid having our real property sold at public auction. We stood to lose more than $200,000 of our home equity if our real property had been sold, but we made the city whole. We paid off all our taxes. You may think that taxpayers are given plenty of opportunity to pay off their debt, but one day we walked into the city hall in Greenfield, Massachusetts with a substantial amount of legal tender for payment and were refused by the tax collector of the city of Greenfield. We have heard that, we have heard it suggested that some taxpayers should be charged more than what they owe in taxes to make up for other taxpayers whose house auction doesn't fully cover what they owe. If you pay off your debt, it's not right for the city to keep money beyond what you owe to cover a shortfall for another taxpayer. Every taxpayer in the city should pay all their back taxes, but no one in Greenfield should have to pay more than what they owe. That's the basic fairness issue tonight in this home equity resolution. We would have lost more than four times what we owed. The home equity resolution tonight asks you to urge the state legislature to treat cities and towns like banks in a foreclosure sale. The city gets to claim all its back taxes and collection costs, but any surplus equity stays with the homeowner.
All right, thank you.
By voting yes on this resolution, taxpayers have to pay every penny of what they owe, but not more than they owe.
All right, I'm sorry, that was the end of your time, but thank you very much. Next I have Tom Thog, and then I'm gonna go back on to our next commenter. I'm sorry, could you speak into the, could? He's not on. The microphone is not on. Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't see. So, the green light means that it's on?
Oh.
Much better.
I also want to talk about home equity theft. If the term "home equity theft" is proper, and I think it is, then we must have a thief or thieves. I believe that there are, through our local elective representatives, the thieves are us, the citizens of Greenfield. We rob from some of us, those who are in dire situations, to the financial benefit of all of us. The state doesn't force our legal representatives, like the mayor or tax collector, to steal, as I understand it, but it does allow them to. 37 states, that's 74% of all the states in the country, do not allow such thievery. Whether our state, the home of gerrymandering, by the way, prohibits home equity theft or not, I encourage us in Greenfield to discontinue this practice. Simply put, it is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Susan Workavdik.
Thank you. My name is Susan Workavdik. I live on Forest Avenue in Greenfield. Often when I come before this council, I am talking about a problem that I think we have to rectify. It's very nice to be able to talk about something positive. I, I do want to thank the city administration for the work they've done on the, the Wilson's Building. And I particularly want to note the work that M.J. Adams has done. I think she has been outstanding at working all, of all the hoops. The, putting together this kind of deal is very difficult and very time-consuming, and I want to thank her very personally for, for doing this, as well as, as the work of John Williams has done from the Greenfields market side. I'm hoping that we will be able to see similar kinds of work done in relation to the Hope Street lot that the fire station presently is on, and that is public property. And I am hoping that we will be able to see a similar kind of housing development there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next I have Tara Cludier and then Jean Wall.
Good evening. Excuse me. My name is Tara Cludier. I'm a Spanish teacher at Greenfield High School, where I've worked the majority of my career. I'm very sorry. I'm also a parent of a recent GHS grad and twin daughters that are seniors right now. I'm a GHS alumni. I am the GEA vice president of the teachers' union and a member of the negotiations team. So I'm letting you know that I'm a stakeholder in the teacher process at, in Greenfield Public Schools. I'm speaking tonight to please ask you to cut the stabilization fund and instead move $800,000 to the contract stabilization fund as requested by school committee chair Amy Peretti. I've been a teacher for about 30 years. And if you told me that learning to teach remotely would not be the most challenging year, I don't think I would have believed you, but it wasn't. The following year, returning to impersonating learning was the hardest year in all of our careers. We continue to struggle in Greenfield Public Schools. We are losing educators after that treacherous year. We are understaffed. We are short instructional assistants and teachers. Every day, we are breaking the law that we have, we're moving the instructional assistants out of classrooms where they're supposed to be, and they're acting as substitute teachers. We are running schools on skeleton crews. Those of us that have stuck it out deserve a raise. We need, need competitive salaries to attract high-quality educators. Our students deserve this, and our educators deserve this. I understand that there seems to be a lot of communication issues happening, that the, the information isn't going back and forth. But as a member of the negotiating team, I can tell you that everybody isn't coming there. We have been negotiating since April, and the mayor hasn't come. And if she doesn't know the, the amount of money that's needed, there needs to be better communication, but the, I'm not sure why the communication isn't happening. But it may not be fully your problem, but you can fix it. And you need to, please. We have been working without a contract since June 2021. And across the state, there are teachers in school districts taking drastic action. And we don't want to do that. We want to keep working for our students and, and get this resolved quickly in a positive manner. And so I ask you, please, fund our contract. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next I have Jean Wall and then Rose Skrillaf.
My name is Jean Wall, and I live in Countryside in Greenfield. Last night, I watched the Ways and Means Committee meeting, where it was revealed that the chief assessor did not get a building permit for work on a commercial property he owns and is renovating. It is very, very painful for me to discuss this. I have enjoyed working with Jo on multiple committees. He is articulate, knowledgeable, charming, and a great asset to our community. However, after watching, some of, some members of the Ways and Means Committee dismissed this information as trivial, and I, I just felt that I need to speak out on, on the building permits. Building permits are designed to protect the public from unscrupulous contractors who cheat unknowing customers by not performing work that meets the standards of the building code. I have totally renovated two homes in Greenfield. I obtained permits, and yes, it is a pain to get, to get the inspectors when I want them. But the law says you have to have a building permit, and I try to obey the law. Building permits are also the vehicle used by the assessor's office to be aware of changes in property values. They should know if a new building is being constructed or a building is being totally renovated, because it affects the assessed value of that property. As an elected official myself, I do feel that we must be held to a higher standard than an ordinary citizen. Just as I would not have the right to ask for special treatment for my child in the schools, Jo does not have the right to not obey the rules governing building permits. How can we, as citizens of Greenfield, believe in the process of paying our property taxes when the chief assessor puts his own financial interests ahead of obeying the rules of the assessor's office? I understand this is not his first offense, so I, therefore, I feel that Mr. Ruggeri should immediately resign from his position in the assessor's office.
Thank you. Next I have Rose Skrillaf and then Pamela Goodwin.
Hi, my name is Rose Skrillaf. I live at 52 Linden Avenue. I'm a teacher at Greenfield Middle School, and I would like to comment today on the pay of instructional assistants. Being a math teacher, I decided to do some math around the pay that IAs receive. Instructional assistants currently start at $15.75 an hour and are in critical need across all Greenfield Public Schools. Curious about how this compares to other jobs in the area, I went ahead and did a job search last night. And here are some jobs in the area that are offering more pay than IAs. Package handler at UPS in South Deerfield, $17.50 an hour. City of Greenfield Parks laborer, $19 to $23 an hour. Store associate at CVS in Greenfield, $17 an hour. Lumber associate at the Home Depot in Greenfield, $16 to $18 an hour. Parking enforcement officer in Northampton, $19 to $25 an hour. Bud Tedner at Columbia Care, Easy Hire Cannabis, Honey Cannabis, Jack's Cannabis, Elevate Cannabis, Resonate, Temple Hill Collective, and Budzy, $16 to $20 an hour. Retail sales associate at Cumberland Farms in Greenfield, not even a mile away from this building, $16.75 an hour. Instructional assistant at Frontier Regional School in South Deerfield, $16.50 to $26 an hour. Grocery clerk at Big Y Foods in Greenfield, $16 an hour. And I have a really long list here, but I know I'm at time, so I want to, I could keep going, okay? And I'm not shaming or calling out these jobs for what they pay. I'm calling out the City of Greenfield for clearly showing that they do not value their instructional assistants more than employees that provide simple convenience items like food, consumer goods, and weed. When the City of Greenfield offers such little pay for the people who support our most at-risk students, the lack of staffing makes sense. I don't know of anyone who would take such a difficult job when every other posting pays more. People want to work and cannot afford to under this contract. And the city must do better to support not only RIAs, but our students, the teachers, and their families. Thank you.
Sorry, folks. I'm going to ask you to pipe down. Next, I have Pamela Goodwin.
Good evening, Pamela Goodwin, 54 High Street, Lake Pocky. I always like to thank you guys. I know that this is a tough, tough job, so I'll start with that. I'd also like to compliment the administration for achieving certain things. But I have a list, and I have only three minutes. I had to take a three-year-old, well, no, now she's five, into Pete's Fish Market to pee. I have had to walk very fast from downtown back to my Weldon place to go to the bathroom, because no place else is there a public bathroom. So I'm going to repeat what I've said in the past. Where is the promised Portland loo that we're supposed to have for a public bathroom downtown? And I take a five-year-old, an eight-year-old, or I go down, or I'm with a 90-year-old with her walker. We don't have any place to go unless we want to go into the food court, and that's if they're open. So I'm annoyed about no porta-potties and no place to go. Secondly, I thought Susan Warghavdik would talk about the lunt. I don't know what's going on. I've been out of town for seven days. And I want to remind people, we have a problem over there with where Lunt Silver Smith was. And I did speak with her today, but not about that. I just came back from a two-day conference in Danvers, Mass. I am personally a volunteer on a state housing board, and we set up unions for people in public housing across the state. We were invited by National Alliance of Housing and Redevelopment, it's called MassNarrow, to go to Danvers and listen about evictions and listen about housing. And those people are the property managers and the commissioners and all their lawyers. So we had a great workshop, and I try to go to these particular ones, because they have a lot of concurrent ones. And it was all about stopping the evictions. Because on my group, we also work with mass law reform attorneys. We do a lot of lobbying down at the State House. We all are going to try again to get the right to counsel, and the evictions are way up across the state. They're up in Springfield, they're up in Worcester, they're up everywhere. I was on a Zoom today with a good friend in public housing in Peabody, and he's being evicted because he's a whistleblower. A board member with me is also kind of a whistleblower, and he's got an eviction coming up too. And it was a trumped-up charge. So I'm a little sick of being evicted. I was not evicted, I just chose homelessness. So if we're going to stop the evictions, I want people here to know there is money out there to help. There is a mediation housing services right here in Greenfield. And if you want to know about how to stop all the evictions, you probably should call me or talk to me and figure out, because there's a way to do it all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next, we have Chief Assessor Randall Austin. I'm sorry, this isn't public comment anymore. We're moving on to communications from city employees. I should have been clear about that.
Evening. So I'm the new Chief Assessor, Randall Austin. And we're here to talk about the tax classification. I did have a presentation which I gave to the Ways and Means Committee last night, but I don't think that we have the technology to display it here tonight and go through it.
I'd be willing to let you borrow my laptop if that would help. I just don't know if you know how to connect it to things.
I've been trying to connect with the Wi-Fi unsuccessfully for the last five minutes. Is there any way you can pull up the presentation and do a screen share? Yes. President Gilmore?
Yes.
The presentation is in our packet. We do have paper copies of it. Okay.
So they all have...
But for the public?
No, it's not for the public, yeah.
But the public should be allowed to see.
Right.
Not fair.
So everyone should at least have an electronic copy of the packet. I don't know if we have any printed-out copies of this presentation.
I fortunately do have one with me, although I didn't bring my reading glasses, so.
Where is it, Mike? Not in the printed agenda, though? Nine?
All right, it's coming.
President Gilmore, may I ask a logistical question?
Sure.
The agenda says we'll be having a presentation from all three assessors. Are the other two on Zoom?
Oh, no, they're here.
Ah. Sorry about that. Don't think I go into your office enough.
Ah, look, there we go. So here it is. We're the City of Greenfield, and it's their Fiscal Year 2023 Tax Classification Hearing. So if you can go to the next page, it's just a basic table of contents and the different things that we're going to be talking about. So an assessment outline and the values of the classification and some comparisons. I put in some information about the personal exemptions. And then we're going to talk about different classification options, and then some comparisons to some other municipalities. And this is our official notification of that. I hope I got all the councilors' names correct. And then the next page is an assessed valuation. And it's assessed value with prior years. So I went back from 2021 and 22, just to show the difference in the values. So it's the total value. And then also, we're talking about the mean and median tax bill. So we're talking about a single-family tax bill. And it's sort of where we've gone historically for the last couple of years, and the average value. And the mean is the average, and the median is the middle. So for instance, if we had 101 sales, it would be sale number 50 or 51 would be the median. And so it's just showing a little bit of where we have come from and what's been going on in the past couple of years. If we could move on, we have some information about the values by classification. So we have really five classes of properties: residential, commercial, industrial, personal property. And there's one that I left out, because historically, we don't have that here. It's called open space. So open space, we deal with in a different way in Greenfield. And so that's not one of the classifications that we have. So anyway, this is where we've gone. I believe it goes from 2018 up to 2022. And it's telling the tax rate that we have on the extreme right-hand side. And so you can see that we did have our, we have our values going up. But we had our tax, the tax rate go down last year by about 90 cents, from 23.22 to 22.32. And then this is just a pie chart of the total value. So it gives you an idea of where the, you know, the total residential value is, the greatest value that we have. It's actually a little less than 76%, but it's getting rounded. And we have the orange and commercial and the lighter orange, which is our industrial, we have a small industrial base. And then the personal property for the commercial businesses, commercial and industrial, makes up the pink area. So then I have a value comparison between fiscal '22 and '23 and the different classes of property and where, you know, you can basically see the increases that we're having. And, you know, the larger things that are going on is really on the residential side, and that's why we're having such a, you know, a steep increase to that. You know, I enter all the deeds for all the sales that have been taking place. And I got here in April, and we had a few months that we had to get that made up. And there's nothing that's selling for what people are asking. It's all, it's a bidding war. And, you know, I've only just recently started to see some sales that are selling for what they're asking, or maybe, you know, $5,000 or $10,000 less. So hopefully, we're going to see things stabilize. But when we have the increases in values, we should see, you know, an opposite reaction to the tax rate and have the tax rate reduced because of the amount of activity we're seeing in the market and the increase in values. So I also wanted to provide some information about the different personal exemptions that we have in town. So we have, you know, the regular senior and veterans are our most popular ones. And there's a few different categories for veterans. Some, depending on the percentage of disability, can get a greater benefit. And some up to, in some circumstances, if they qualify, even either the veteran or the surviving spouse, usually it's the surviving spouse, it's a total exemption of the taxes. So we have all these available. And I guess while I have the chance, let me put in a plug that, hey, we've got these exemptions out here for our seniors. And I hate hearing that, oh, you know, I'm 72, and, you know, I qualified for this and didn't know about it. You know, my 82-year-old friend told me about it, and, you know. So they're here, and I'm hoping to, in the future, be able to, at the community center here, do a presentation about the different ones that we have. And we have information available in the assessor's office and on the website about that. Or if you have any questions, just give us a call at the office, and we'd be happy to tell you about the different things that we have and how the qualifications are set up for that. So there was a little bit of discussion around having a split tax rate. So I put some information in here about that. And it's basically got a scale, and I use the average single-family tax bill, or pardon me, tax value for single-family homes, that $258,000. And add what our current projected tax rate, I think I used a calculation of 1964. We now have the approval from the Department of Revenue, and things did change a little bit, our tax rate number that we're proposing as the Board of Assessors, as a single tax rate is 1965. So we're off just a penny. But this gives you an example of where your tax bill is going to lie. And then I also tried to give a scale of increasing value so that you could get an idea. You know, if you had something lower, actually, I did get some input, and next year, I'll have, I'll go down a little bit further than the $200,000 to give an idea of the impact on homes of that value also. But also, you can use this, because it's a single tax rate, to get an idea of what commercial values are, these higher values, or ones that you would associate with a commercial property. And it gives you an idea of the taxes that they have to pay at that value. And so I went along with a couple of different factors. So we do qualify the way our values are and the percentage of commercial and industrial property to do a split rate, but there's different factors that could be adopted. And so I put in the information, we also had a PDF of some information. And they told about a couple of the different factors that we could adopt. And so I put an illustration of what it would be if we had decided to go with a split tax rate, what the tax rate would be for the single-family homes or for residential properties. So that includes condos and two families and three families and apartments. And then what would happen with the commercial side, too. And so they would see, you know, $21.61 would be that in 1901 if we decided on a 1.1 split. And so then the next two slides are of an increasing factor, a 1.2 factor, and then also a 1.3 factor, just to give an idea of what would happen and the impact that you would see residentially as well as commercial. And give you an opportunity to see some of those and possibly weigh in your mind if, in the future, this is something that the town wanted to work towards. You know, it's a possibility, I suppose. So if we could move on, I wanted to do some comparisons to other towns. I didn't really know what town to choose. And so instead of choosing a town, I thought I would let the values choose the towns. And so I went and got information from fiscal 2022. And this particular slide is for residential value. And so that will be the first column there, residential. And it tells these different municipalities. What I did is I took four below Greenfield and four above Greenfield. So we're right in the middle, and these are the towns that we are close to in residential value on this slide. So if we could move on to the next slide, I do the same thing with the different values of property for the commercial value comparison. So now we're going to move to that middle column, and you'll see that it's, you know, a lower number at the bottom with Great Barrington, and it increases to Vellingham, and we're right in the middle. So these are some of the different towns that we are comparable to commercially. The next one is the same thing with industrial value. And you can see that there are a couple of these towns that come up. I believe it's Oxford and Great Barrington are going to come up more than once. And so it does give a little bit of an idea of sort of where we are in some different towns. Some are closer, some are farther away. So if we could go to the personal property value. And so again, you'd have to move to have it make sense to the personal property column and see from the low to the high, and the comparable towns with Greenfield right in the middle. And then the last slide that I did was a total comparison, a total value. So all of the values, residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property, all combined. And then I also put the percentages that we have of the difference between the residential and commercial, industrial, and personal property. It says CIP. That's what that stands for, the commercial, industrial, and personal property. And then the last slide I did is, I said, let's look at things from a levy comparison. So the tax levy is the amount of funds that we raise through taxes. And so, of course, that's not everything that we raise. We raise other things through appropriations. But when we're just looking at taxable value, we did this levy comparison with these other towns. And again, just to give you an idea of where we're at with, you know, a few below, so a million or so less, or a million or so more than we actually have here in Greenfield.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
What's RO percentage of total and CIP percentage of total?
That's, so the residential, the RO really stands for residential. And that's the percentage of the total value. So the residential, in that case, you know, the total percentage of the residential value, like the pie chart I showed you earlier. And so then the commercial and industrial, CIP is commercial, industrial, and personal property. And those are usually combined. If it was going to be a split tax rate, that would be residential. And then the other rate would be for the commercial, industrial, and personal property. Are there any other questions?
Could I, I'm getting the impression that you recommend against a split tax rate.
Yes, I was just going to get to that, because we do have some recommendations to make. And the board is recommending that we adopt a factor of one. So I was showing these other different factors, 1.1 and 1.2. So we're saying no. We're recommending that we stick with a single tax rate and that we adopt a factor of one for the classification.
Just to follow up, and that's because so much of the value in the town is in residential. And it's hard to tax the little bit of commercial that we have.
Yes. You know, that's something that we could consider, but we, you know, we've got an unusual mix in Greenfield. And so we do have some big-box stores like Home Depot and Big Y and, you know, Staples and the like. And places like that, if we went to a split tax rate, oh, they're going to blink. But we've got a lot of other smaller businesses, and those businesses, it's going to be much more of an impact. And those businesses, it's going to be much more of an impact. And with what they've just gone through, especially with COVID right now, um, you know, the, the last couple of years, it's been a shock to their system. So I don't necessarily think that now is the right time to consider that. So that leads me into one of the other things that we're going to, uh, other recommendations that we're going to make. So there's a recommendation for a small commercial exemption. And that is something where we could have a benefit of, I believe it's an extra ten percent to any, um, business that has a value of a million dollars or less and that has a total of ten employees or less. And, um, that, while it has good intentions, doesn't always help all of the businesses because many of the businesses don't own the property if they're leasing or renting. And, um, that would provide a benefit to the owner of the property, but not necessarily the business. And that's who we would be looking to help. And so by keeping a single tax rate, we're recommending that, that we do not adopt a small commercial exemption. And then the last one would be, uh, and I kind of went out of order, but the next one would be a residential, residential exemption. We could adopt a small residential exemption. But it's basically, you know, we, we could decide that we're going to tax at only ninety percent of the full value. And so, you know, if you had a house that was one-hundred-thousand, you would be taxed on only ninety-thousand dollars at that value. But then that just kind of lowers everything for everyone. And it's, it's six of one or half a dozen of the other. So there are different cities and circumstances where that does make sense. But that's usually where you have a much larger commercial base and there's a tremendous amount of value, uh, where residential isn't such a large portion as it is here. And so those are the three recommendations that we're making tonight to the council and made previously or last night to the Ways and Means Committee.
Counselor Sager.
I'd like to point out that was, that the presentation last night is excellent. As today, and I just wanted to say you really, we found a big increase in personal property and in your new growth. And I thought maybe you might speak to that, just to give credit where it was due. I said that last night, but I wanted people to know that as our new assessor, um, that we'd had a big growth in two parts of this and maybe you could speak to that just so people here would, would know.
Okay, well, I can't really take all the credit for the growth. And that's, a lot of it is due to the different activity we have in new construction and the, the follow-up on building permits and making sure that we're capturing all of the new taxable value. Um, but we did have a difference and a big increase in one of the personal property accounts. And it's something that has been going on, uh, for the last few years, a debate regarding the way to value the properties. Um, you know, I'm talking about the big utilities. So, um, we're talking about an account that has over a sixty-million-dollar value, just one of the accounts of the personal property. So you can see that total value that we have in the presentation for personal property. And what is that amount? So that's, that's a big chunk with these types of utilities. So they had a, their methodology of valuing property and it was, uh, basically a net book value where they would depreciate many of their assets down to next to nothing. But from the assessing world and we're looking at it from a marketing standpoint, those types of businesses aren't often changing hands. But we've had, you know, uh, business professionals that have started making record of this and accumulating the information. So it came to the point where we could say, okay, you can't, you know, you're saying that your value is this, but when you sell, you're, you're depreciating your assets down to nothing. But when you sell, there's still plenty of value that's coming across for that. So the assessing side looks at, uh, RCNLD. So we, that's, it stands for replacement cost new less depreciation. And so, yes, you can, you know, for instance, depreciate that telephone pole down to a certain extent, but it's still there and it's still holding up your wires. So you can't tell me that it's not worth anything. And this went to the appellate tax board with the, see, Boston and Seduce Springfield. And I, I think they're still appealing in different towns and picking on smaller towns right now. But it's something that has gone through the appellate tax board and it has been decided that a better, better and more accurate, uh, recording of the value is to use a blended net book value and replacement cost new. So it basically gave us about a forty percent increase in the value of, of a couple of these big accounts. And, and that's what has, you know, put, put us up there. Uh, that wasn't necessarily all claimable as growth, but it, it, you know, it still gives us a significant more chunk of tax dollars to, uh, spread everything around.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any, did you have a follow-up?
On that new growth that we add, that doesn't actually go away? That will be added to the tax levy for?
Right, it won't be acknowledged as new growth, but it's just an increase in the amount of taxable value. So the amount, the total amount that we're able to tax. And that's one of the things that the PDF talked about, the different, um, you know, our levy capacity and our excess levy limit and our levy ceiling. And that's what that applies to. And, and what we don't want to do is become what they refer to as a capped community, meaning that we've out, where we don't have enough value to tax, get all the tax dollars that we need. We still can, um, you know, I, I can't remember, it was a little over two million dollars, I think, that we have as a surplus, that we don't necessarily have to ask for those tax dollars because we were not at our cap. And that's one thing that every town wants to avoid.
Are there any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for coming up with that presentation and technology at the last second.
Technology and levy limits, like, what could be more fun? All right, next we have, um, public hearings and second readings. Am I doing this out of order? Do I need to open the public hearing first and then we, we do the readings?
Go ahead and open the public.
Okay, I am going to open the public hearing. And I actually have someone who signed up to speak under the public hearing, so I'm going to need a little coaching here. Do I call people to speak or do we do the second readings before people speak?
So Counselor Ford, you should read the public hearing notices. The people should speak and then the second reading should be read.
Great, thank you. Take it away.
Okay, great. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at six-thirty at John Sun Community Center, thirty-five Pleasant Street and Zoom. It's listed below. Meeting ID eight-nine-three-eight-six-seven-three-five-seven-five-four to receive public input on the following. Appropriate two million, five-hundred-thousand dollars from free cash to stabilization, capital stabilization fund eight-four-oh-two. Appropriate two-hundred-thousand dollars from free cash to compensated absences fund eight-four-five-zero. Appropriate two-hundred-thousand dollars from free cash to contract stabilization fund eight-four-oh-three. Appropriate a hundred-thousand dollars from free cash to general stabilization fund eight-four-oh-oh. Appropriate six-hundred-thousand dollars from free cash to reduce the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three tax rate. Transfer one-hundred-and-seven-thousand-three-hundred dollars from free cash to fiscal year twenty-three general vehicle, general fund vehicle fuel accounts. Appropriate eight-thousand-five-hundred from sewer retained earnings to fiscal year twenty-three sewer vehicle fuel accounts. Appropriate ten-thousand from water retained earnings to fiscal year twenty-three water vehicle, uh, fuel accounts. Appropriate fourteen-thousand-three-eighty-seven from fiscal year twenty-two reserve to fiscal year twenty-three weights and measures contracted services. The city council may consider the same on Wednesday, November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at six-thirty at John Sun Community Center, thirty-five Pleasant Street and Zoom. Address is listed. Meeting ID nine-eight-three-eight-six-seven-three-five-seven-five-four. Materials can be obtained from the city clerk's office, fourteen Court Square, from nine AM to four PM, Monday through Friday, or phone four-one-three-seven-seven-two-one-five-five-five, extension six-one-six-three. Sheila Gilmore, City Council President.
Thank you. Do you want to read the other ones so that we can just open them both up at the same time?
Sure, they'll be fine. Um, public hearing, Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at six-thirty PM at John Sun Community Center, thirty-five Pleasant Street and via Zoom, address listed. Meeting ID eight, I mean, excuse me, nine-eight-three-eight-six-seven-three-five-seven-five-four to adopt a residential factor in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fifty-eight, Section one A, which shall be used by the Board of Assessors to determine the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property. The assessors shall provide all information and data relevant to making such determination and the fiscal effect of the available alternatives. The hearing is required under Section fifty-six of Chapter forty, Mass. General Law. Sheila Gilmore, Greenfield City Council President.
Thank you. All right, so I have one person who signed up for both hearings. So first, let's start with the appropriations, uh, because that's the order that it's listed in the agenda. And I have Stephanie Duklos. Yes, green for go.
Hi, Stephanie Duklos, Chapman Street, Greenfield.
Oh, you're not green anymore.
All right. I wanted to speak on the compensated absences fund. Seems a little high. We, it looks as though we regularly put about twenty-five to fifty-thousand dollars in that fund. Um, it's asking for two-hundred-thousand dollars and I'm not, I can't quite wrap my head around how, when you're presenting an operating budget, you have an anticipated people's sick time or paid time off or potential retirements in that year. And if it's not being done correctly and it's not in the operating budget, my question is as to why it's not included in the operating budget. I also wanted to speak to, um, I actually had a question regarding the presentation earlier, but I know that we can't have them answered. It looks as though we had lost one industrial parcel and seven personal property parcels. And I just wanted some clarification on what exactly lost we had on those parcels. That pretty much wraps up what I wanted to say.
Thank you. And then while you're there, um, you also signed up for the public hearing on the residential factor.
Yeah, that, that was my question is, I mean, I'm trying to.
Oh, that was both of them, gotcha.
Yeah, it, it was a lot to absorb between last night and tonight, so.
I know, it's a lot of meetings.
So I just had a couple of questions on it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak on the public hearing that would be on any of those that Counselor Ford just read? Okay, is there anyone online that asked? Okay, so seeing none, we can close the public hearings and now we need second readings. I'm getting good at this, all right. Close the eight-fifteen.
Okay, this, uh, City Council's second reading, November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Appropriate two million, five-hundred-thousand from free cash to capital stabilization fund eight-four-oh-two. Appropriate two-hundred-thousand from free cash to compensated absences fund eight-four-five-zero. Appropriate two-hundred-thousand from free cash to contract stabilization fund eight-four-oh-three. Appropriate a hundred-thousand dollars from free cash to general stabilization fund eight-four-hundred, eight-four-hundred. Appropriate six-hundred-thousand from free cash to reduce the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three tax rate. Transfer one-hundred-and-seven-three-hundred-thousand from free cash to the fiscal year twenty-three general fund vehicle fuel accounts. Appropriate eight-thousand-five-hundred from sewer retained earnings to fiscal year twenty-three sewer vehicle fuel accounts. Appropriate ten-thousand dollars from water retained earnings to fiscal year twenty-three water vehicle fuel accounts. Appropriate fourteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-seven from fiscal year twenty-two reserve to fiscal year twenty-three weights and measures contracted services.
So I just want to correct the record. It's transfer one-hundred-and-seven-thousand-three-hundred from free cash, because I think what I heard was one-hundred-and-seven-three, but I heard something.
Okay.
I heard it.
That's perfectly fine.
I just wanted to put that out there. Great. So now we're done with public hearings and second readings. Um, before we go into motions, orders and resolutions, I'm going to give everyone, oh, I'm sorry, Vice President Gwynn.
Um, did you have a point of clarification?
I think so. I'm, I'm not sure if I do, but the one about appropriating it to general stabilization, is that the order that's on page one-oh-one, which is actually to go, going to contract stabilization? Should that say contract stabilization? Or is that something else, something else?
That's a separate order that's being presented as a first reading tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's take a quick break. Um, let's, I'm going to say five minutes because in real life it's going to be ten. So I'm giving everyone five minutes to get a drink of water and then we will resume.
I'm going to set the timer.
Kathy is setting the timer and you need to be in your seats.
Five.
Five. (laughing).[373.41]
I'm assuming that would be enough to cover the contract disparities? Is there another way to use this?
I'm going to let Counselor Forgie and then Counselor Distorga respond, because I think they have good answers for you.
Okay, thank you very much. The important piece of this legislation is that the $600,000 came from personal property assessment. And it came in after we did the recap sheet, which is how we set the tax rate. So this technically should have been included into recap, which would have been configured by the assessors and a figure recommended for for the tax rate. This actually reduces the tax rate. And it is the appropriate way to use this money because it belonged with it on the tax recap sheet. It just came in late, so the decision was made that it should offset the taxes, and I agree with that.
But what is recap?
Tax, a tax recap sheet is everything that they put together in order to set a tax rate. So they take, they take, they take everything into consideration, what your personal property is, what your revenue is, you know, receipts from the city, all types of things. And then money is left over at the end of the year. All of that goes, and it's all worked on by our Chief Financial Officer and the Accounting Department. And they put together, and it's all done in accordance with rules and regulations that Boston sends to us. And at the end of the day, they calculate what the tax rate is going to be based on what they have collected and what the, the other figures on the tax sheet are. This money was not accounted for at the time they were doing their calculations. It came in afterwards. And so that's why it does belong on the, on the tax recap sheet. And it should offset the tax rate and lower the tax rate for the citizens of Greenfield because that's the appropriate place that it belongs.
And I'd like to note that appropriate is in the eye of the beholder, but I think this is also okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I'm going to, I'm going to support this. I just think appropriate is in the eye of the beholder and is not a fixed thing.
So, yes, Counselor Distorga had her hand up also. I wanted to recognize her.
I, I was going to echo what Counselor Forgie said, that we actually heard from Director Gilman and, and from the chief assessor, that it really has, has to go that way. I appreciate the, the thought behind that. But the figures that we gave to the state, we have to use it this way.
Thank you. Did anyone else have any questions or comments on this motion? All right, in that case, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries. If it becomes contentious, or if I'm confused about, you know, if we've got what looks like a split vote, then we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. All right, next, fiscal year 2023 tax classification.
Order number fiscal year 23-075A, City Council Order, City of Greenfield, Massachusetts. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the City Council adopt a minimum residential factor of one, resulting in an equal tax rate for all classes of property for fiscal year 2023. Majority vote required.
I'd second that.
This received a unanimous endorsement last night from Ways and Means.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions or comments on this piece? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
Order number fiscal year 23-075B, City Council Order, City of Greenfield, Mass.
I think there might be a delay. No, I think there might be a little bit of an audio delay.
I'm sorry.
Right, but it was, it was twice in a row, so I think there might be an audio delay.
Okay. Order number fiscal year 20. Okay, thank you. Order number fiscal year 23-075B, City Council Order, City of Greenfield, Massachusetts. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the City Council votes that no residential exemption be adopted for fiscal year 2023. Majority vote required. This was a unanimous positive recommendation.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If it was opposed, it would mean aye, so. Abstentions? All right, the motion carries. It wouldn't have changed the outcome of the vote? No, I think you're right. Yeah. I think you're right. That's okay. All right. Next.
Order number fiscal year 23-075C, City Council Order, City of Greenfield, Mass. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the City Council votes that no small commercial exemption be adopted for fiscal year 2023. Majority vote required.
I'd second that.
This was also a unanimous positive recommendation from Ways and Means.
Great. Any discussion, questions, comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion carries.
All right. This is quite a long.
Thirty-two.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
All right, before anybody leaves, we're going to need signatures on the tax classification. We can pass that, yeah, let's pass that down now. All right.
Okay.
Do we want to move on to the next one?
Ready? Okay. Order, order number fiscal year 23-045, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Reedegaardner, in order to appropriate from free cash in the amount of $2,500,000 to capital stabilization, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of, sum of $2,500,000 from free cash to General Stabilization Fund 8402. Capital stabilization fund, okay, thank you.
Second.
Majority vote required.
Second.
This also, I'm going to go back in my notes because I promised everybody I'd have them correct tonight. This received a unanimous positive recommendation.
Wonderful. Questions or comments? Yes, Counselor Distorga?
I, I have comments on that, and I'm going to make a motion at the end of the comments. When we actually had our initial vote on that was at our last Ways and Means meeting over a month ago, not at last night. So I'm just going to read my statement first. Something about last night's meeting didn't quite set right with me. We, we had over $4 million that was certified in free cash, which is the largest figure we've ever had. It needs to, it definitely needs to be allocated in, to different funds. We heard an impassioned plea from Director Gilman. She talked about the need for keeping up with deferred maintenance and infrastructure. It sounded a little bit as if we'd been ignoring this, and that just didn't ring true. This council has done a fabulous job voting for needed deferred maintenance and, and infrastructure. Think about it, the new fire station, every rusting truck and unsafe vehicle has been approved by us along with every water and sewer project and sidewalk request. The only thing that we didn't vote money for was paving a parking lot that we didn't own. Now, think about what was said last night at our Ways and Means meeting, and then think about what we didn't say. No one said a word about taking care of our employees. Those buildings that we're keeping up on are only as good as the fabulous staff we have inside of them. Those projects will only get done if we have in-house staff to house them. I'm not sure how many teachers we have lost to other school systems that pay more, and I'm not sure how many positions in DPW remain unfilled because their pay is too low. I am sure that our largest unions are either in the midst of negotiations or about to start them. I am sure that food costs are up 12% and that it's going to cost all of us 28% more to heat our homes this year. I hope that you will join me in voting a 300,000 reduction in capital stabilization with the ask that the mayor send us a new order for that money to go into contractual stabilization so that we can pay our beloved employees for a fair wage. I moved to reduce the allocation to capital stabilization to $2,200,000.
Second.
Okay, so. Do we have any questions or comments on the amendment that was just made and seconded? Yes.
So I support the rationale, but I'm wondering how you came up with the 300,000 number.
Yes, please do.
We have future orders, future financial orders. There was already, we, we have a balance of 170,000 in contractual stabilization right now. There's an order on the table for 200,000, and there has been an order for 200,000 to go in, which would bring it up to three, 370,000. With the other 100,000, we get to 470,000. This 300,000 would get us up to what was asked for, or what, the number that was mentioned by our school committee chair a month ago. And I, I know what projects we have coming up. I've reviewed the, the, our capital plans, or at least what was in there from last year. There's a lot of wonderful things that we're going to do, and I'm sure that we're going to vote for them. But it's difficult to, to finish negotiating contracts if you don't have enough money set aside. Additionally, all of those monies that are in stabilization can be transferred out. I, I did check that with Director Gilman last night. It's not like we're losing this. It's going to be in a different stabilization fund. It makes it easier, in my opinion, for, for the negotiating committees to do that, knowing that the funds are there to pay for the contracts. We're not going to lose it. I don't want to take it away from I and I, or.
I and I.
Infiltration, keeping our water supply safe. But we need to take care of paying our help. I, I have voted, like I said, in favor of every capital project that we've had. I occasionally questioned the source of how we were going to pay for it, but I've been in favor of everything, I think, except paving a parking lot.
And the police station.
Vice President Gwynn?
I, I like the idea of this, and I, and I, I think it, it has merit. I just would like to caution us to remember, we can reduce this, but we can't tell her where to put it. I'm just saying, we can suggest it, but it's not in our power to say where that money goes. So it's a good recommendation, and, and I, and I support it. But just reminding everyone, both public and, we can't tell, if we reduce this, there's no saying that it'll end up there.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments specifically on the amendment?
Yes, I just, Counselor Mayo?
Yes, go ahead.
I support, I completely support Counselor Distorga's amendment and the logic behind that amendment. I believe the money, if we better use that stabilizing, our, our, basically moving the money into stability and making it to fund our contracts for our teachers.
Thank you.
That's all for me.
Thank, thank you. Yes, Counselor Elmer and then Counselor Healy.
I guess I want to echo the caution that we can ask the mayor. I think specifically you want, you would like her to put this money to the teachers. That's what you're thinking about? Can I ask her to answer?
That's, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, go ahead.
Into, into contractual stabilization. We have that contract coming up. And then we also have, right after that, and Director Gilman was very clear that that's not for a few months. But after that, we'll be having the DPW, which is a group of 70. I think there's 70 in that, in that union. So, yes, it, it's teachers, IAs, and I, I realize that we don't have control over where it went. But the last time we didn't vote for something, you know, it did end up going into that. We, we, we're not in charge of that. I agree.
Right, because, because it could end up going to the police, which is not what you had in mind. Got it, okay.
Thank you. I have Counselor Healy, then Counselor Lepiansky.
Sure, I, I just have one question. I don't think I've seen any capital improvement lists for 2024 yet.
It's out.
Are they out yet?
It was sent out today.
Today? Okay, so I haven't looked at that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess I can't speak on that, but what I can speak on, I, I do support having the money in that contract stabilization in the fact that down the road, we'd still have to vote on it to be appropriated towards that use, correct? Right? You know, there's other things that I see, you know, we don't approve the school budget, right? We're allowed to increase it, we can't decrease it. My concerns there is how well the manages, the money is being managed by the school committee. Right now, this year alone, from last year, there's $655,000 left in the Circuit Breaker Fund that needs to be spent. There's another 1.5 million in the Circuit Breaker revenue for this year. There's $561,000 in the SPD IDEA grant, which hasn't been utilized yet. There's $704,000 in the special tuition account. So there's a lot of money floating, that's 3.449 million dollars floating out there right now. On top of that, you have your S R 2 funds. The balance in that account is 1,600,027 cents. And then the S R 3 funds, which is 2,900 and some change, which is another $3,963. So in total, there's $7,412 between those funds. Believe me, I have kids in the Greenfield system. The number one person in that, that makes those schools work are the teachers, and I support their contracts. But I have a hard time, because we have no control over the school committee budget and how they're using it, that they, they ask for more money all the time, but without justification. I think we really need to have joint meetings with the school committee to come to some sort of conclusion so we're not constantly handing money over when there might be misused money or unused money. Secondly, I looked at transportation costs in Greenfield for the school, and I wonder when the last time we actually, you know, negotiated our transportation in the town? I do know we do some internal transportation. But during the year COVID, we spent, from what I saw, almost $650,000 on transportation. Our kids were at home. Want to know why? Because we have to pay these drivers six hours a day, minimum. There's, so we need to do a better end on the school committee side to deal with our funding that we're giving them before we give them more money, and that's just my own opinion.
Thank you. Next, I have Counselor Lepiansky, then Counselor Forgie.
Thank you.
So I, I just wanted to make a note with regard to, a couple of counselors said, and it's true, that we can't decide where money would be reallocated, if at all, if we cut it. But this council has repeatedly chosen not to use its leverage because we have the right to vote down anything or everything that the mayor proposes unless and until she funds what we think she should fund. Now, I'm not saying we should do that all the time, but don't pretend we can't. We can back the mayor into a corner if she's really not going to do it. That's all.
Thank you. Next, I have Counselor Forgie.
Thank you. This might be a little bit off topic, but it's kind of a pet peeve of mine. I will listen to anybody who wants to say anything at all about any part of municipal government. But at this particular time, I, I, number one, I, I'm very intrigued by the idea, and I appreciate putting this out. But I also have to say that what Counselor Healy was saying is absolutely correct. The thing that is getting in, into my way of thinking is asking the council to move money into certain funds to fund teachers' contracts is not, it's, it's counterintuitive to the process and the procedure. You, as union folks, negotiate your best contract. And then it's really up to the people who you report to, which is the school committee, to make decisions on how and when they're going to fund the contract. And in turn, the school committee has to come to the city and say to the city, this is what we're looking for to fund our contracts. It's not any different on the city side than it is on the school side, except on the school side, it's your school board that is your authority. We on the council, when the time comes, when the contracts are settled and when people are making asks for money, that's when our responsibility kicks in. And it's really up to us to examine all the funds that are available, not only on the school side, but the city side as well, to determine whether or not everything can be funded appropriately. We do have input. We can always put more money in a school budget by reducing the town side budgets or the city side budgets. But we cannot ever allocate any other type of money anyplace. It can only be, we can reduce other budgets to put them into the school department. That's the law. I just think we've got a little bit confused and a little bit ahead of ourselves right now in what we can and cannot do, or what we should and should be doing. And I also want to talk about, contract negotiations are going on right now. My expectation is they're going to be settled either at the end of this year, maybe not the end of this year, but fiscal year '24, we'll see, I'm certain. Or the beginning of '23, we'll see these monies being asked for. And in regard to fiscal year '24 moving forward, when we go ahead during this budget cycle and we start looking at departmental needs, there will be some indication of what departments, including the school department, is going to be looking for in regard to salary and wage increases. So for instance, if they know a contract is going to go in at 5%, then all departments are instructed, at least on the city side, to increase their budget requests by 5% to see where those numbers come in. It's not like this fund is the only way to fund a contract. The budget allows for the contract to be funded to a certain extent. This is what I would call the emergency fund to get those contracts signed. So I just want to correct a lot of information that's out there right now, that people are, I understand. I mean, I've been on both sides of the aisle. I've been a member of bargaining unit. I've been a member of a union. I've been a mem, I've been, I've been the mayor. So I understand where people are coming from, and like I said, I will listen to anything anybody wants to tell me. But at this particular point, the negotiation exists between the unions and management. And our funding pieces are come afterwards. So I'm not totally opposed to doing this, but I've been listening to what everybody's saying, and it bothers me a little bit that we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves when there is a process in place. And I do have faith in the process. I've been through it a number of times. Just understand where my heart is. I just want people to understand that there are certain things we can do as a council and certain things that we cannot do as a council. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bullock?
Yeah, this might be a question for you, Counselor Forgie, but, and forgive my lack of understanding of municipal budgets. But I've heard this, the, uh, uh, figures, many, a couple of different figures now about the school budget and the, and the amount of money that's left, or that is accessible in the school budget a lot recently. And from a, you know, organizational budget standpoint, I know that you do not want to go into another fiscal year in, in the red. And I think that's some of what, what, what the superintendent was potentially speaking to today when she was talking about school choice funds. So I guess my question is, and I, I really just wish the mayor and the superintendent were here to answer some questions that we have. I know that Counselor Bottomley asked that earlier in the evening. But my question is, that's, that $7 million, or I heard it referenced as $6 million earlier in the week, is that funding like a holdover to bring over into the next year so that we're, you're not like, no one wants to run their budget down to zero? Is that what that funding is, or is that funding not allocated and could be allocated? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I am saying that, and I am going to call, Liz is, is on, is on our, on our screen at our meeting here. And I do think that she is more astute in answering. But there are certain types and kinds of funds that have to be used for certain things. We all know that. And there should be, my opinion, I guess, and I think it's a good accounting practice, that when you are awarded a certain amount of money for X number of, I don't know, I'm just going to throw something out there, for circuit writers, say, for instance, when you're awarded a certain amount of money for that, the expectation is that that money will be used and it will not be carried forward and carried forward and carried forward, which sometimes I've seen where different pots of money go for years on end. While, this is going back in history now, while the city is trying to do its best, but there is still that money within the school department budget. So maybe to clarify that a little bit more, if it's okay with our, our president, could we just call on Liz?
I think that would be fine, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Liz? I would.
Point of order. Point of order.
Sorry, just Counselor Bottomley?
I would prefer if counselors could have this debate first, but that's just a preference.
I'm, I'm not asking, I'm not asking Liz to, I'm asking Liz to clarify.
I really can't hear. Can you repeat the question?
Go ahead.
Okay, so my question was, the, the amount of money that is being referenced in the school budget, whether it's 7 million or, I've heard other numbers over the last couple of weeks, that's, that's, as I understand it, it's not allocated? Is that money? Is that money available to be used in the budget? Or is that money that, that I know, at least organizationally in budgets, you carry over a percentage into the next year in order to not go into the red?
So, so some of them have to be spent this year. Some of them may be carried forward. For example, S R 2 must be spent by September. S R 3, the following September. Carryforward, Circuit Breaker, and for, folks, the reason I know this is I'm a certified school business administrator, and I worked for Greenfield Public Schools for five years. So I sort of know this fluently. The carryforward Circuit Breaker must be spent this year. So there are certain things that, yes, it's wise to carry a balance forward, but some of it must be spent.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does that answer your question? All right, were there any other, so Counselor Bottomley and Counselor Toronto haven't spoken on this amendment yet. So I'm going to go Bottomley, Toronto, and then back to Counselor Lepiansky.
My first statement is that we heard from the superintendent and the chair of the school committee. school committee, who...
Can you, can you get directly into the mic?
Yeah.
Thank you.
From the superintendent and the chair of the school committee, whose sole responsibility is the health of the public schools of Greenfield. So I, I guess my trust would lean more with them and what they're telling us, and I have to say, and I'm hearing a lot of really good points, but fundamentally, the difference between Counselor Forgé and I is that, as a teacher and someone who's watched contracts and the terrible raises that they've gotten since I've been in Greenfield, I don't trust the process, and I think we're too passive as a city council, and I would rather take a chance and ask the mayor to put the money in a different fund, because I'd rather take the chance on the teachers, and if we're wrong, what have we lost? Sure, the mayor could spend it wherever she wants, but I'm just tired of these things coming back to us at the end, and we have to react, and we see terrible contracts, which is just not fair and it's not right, and we're hearing directly from, we have a number that was given, or at least just given to us from the school committee chair, that perhaps might make things better. So I would rather err on that side than say, which I hear over and over again, the schools are loaded. I just have a hard time believing that they're so loaded that we can't pay our teachers, we, teachers are fleeing our system. We, the, we don't have enough IAs, it's, I mean, in huge amounts. So I just cannot believe that our superintendent in our, in our school committee would be fine with that if they had the money to spend. So that, that's my comment.
Okay, so I'm going to skip over, because you did mention Counselor Forgé by name. So Counselor Forgé gets to jump the line.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I'm not casting any aspersions on anybody at this particular time, I'm just saying that we have heard from the superintendent of schools and from the chair and vice chair of the school committee. I am saying at this point, in my opinion, it is premature to go ahead and do this. They, the school superintendent, the negotiating team of the school board, and I served on the school board for six years as well, as the mayor, and was involved in contract negotiations during that time, everybody sits down and makes their best deal. The funding piece, when the deal is done, comes back to the school board, they approve it or they disapprove it, and then they have to fund it. And the funding is in part written into the budget requests that come forward for the next fiscal year, and additional funds that are put together in a safety net like what we are talking about right now. I would say that it would be extremely important for us, if we're going to have this debate about money and does the school have enough to fund, or doesn't have enough to fund, that we shouldn't, in my opinion, jump to conclusions right now. I believe the school is well-funded, and I believe we should ask for the, for the ledgers. I think that that's very important for us to understand where all that money is. Yeah, I mean, where is that money? Where has it gone? Where is it going? When the charter was formed, the idea of, was very new to put the mayor on the school committee, but part of that idea was that the mayor would be a liaison to the money piece, so that the mayor, so that the city side, which had always sort of met a stone wall before, would now have access to all the information that was going on, where the expenditures were being made, what policies were happening, and also what contracts were being negotiated, and what funding was there on the school side, and what funding was the city going to be responsible for. So I would suggest, as we have done with the city at this particular point, we ask for ledgers and we ask for, we ask for the numbers, we ask for the reports and everything else from the school side, to see what is in each fund and to try to figure out what our money needs are. I'm not suggesting in any way that we don't fund contracts, we have to fund contracts. And we leave it up to other people to negotiate those contracts. We do not negotiate contracts. We are charged with doing something with the money when the contracts are signed. And I understand, I, I believe in this fund, I think it's a great fund for us to have, but I'm also saying to please consider the fact that if there's an across-the-board of, say, 5%, then all budgets have to reflect that in their annual ask for funding to the city council. They have to reflect that. Thank you.
Okay, next I had Counselor Toronto, and then Vice President Gwynn, I don't think has spoken on this amendment.
Yeah, I was also going to echo the caution of, or just, I mean, since, multiple people have said it tonight, but we, I almost feel like we say this every month about something different, is we have zero power to reappropriate money. And whether it's in this instance or in, in other instances that have come up, I just think amongst, amongst folks, as you learn this echoing, that we cannot reappropriate The, I, this has been the biggest free cash, it's been said, so when I've, I've heard not only on, on this, but on some of the others that are coming up later, that they seem to be more than what we might need. Well, if we have more free cash, then we're going to be able to add more to every one of these kinds of things than is, might seem typical in the past. And I just also want to point out that we can always move this out of capital stabilization at a more appropriate time. Yeah, it would take two more votes to do it, but I, I got to concur with the mayor, or the former mayor, sorry, Counselor Forgé, that I, I think we're putting the cart before the horse on this one, and I, I just don't, though I understand where, like, the reasons of why, why you want to do it, I want to fund the teachers, of course. It's, I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer. It sounds like more of the problem has been getting the, getting the negotiations going, and that has absolutely nothing to do with us. So I mean, that, that's a whole nother animal that's got to be tackled, and, and I, I feel bad that that hasn't happened already, and I, I wish that to be a speedy process at this point. I just don't think that this really has anything to do with us at this point in time. That's all.
Okay, then I had Vice President Gwynn, then Lapinski, then Bullock.
I actually spoke on this.
You did, okay. Lapinski, then Bullock, then Gwynn.
So just to Counselor Bottomley's point, the mayor can't spend money that we cut from this however she wants, she would have to come back to us with another order at a later time. And I would like to move to call the question.
Do we have a second? We don't have a second, so then, the speaking order was Counselor Bullock and then Vice Presi...
I'll second it. Mayo?
Oh, good, okay.
Okay, so that's non-debatable. All in favor of calling the question? Please say aye. All opposed? Okay, so the motion fails, we have not called the question. So we are back to the amendment. Counselor Golub, I don't believe you've spoken on this amendment. Okay, so you're next.
Next as in right now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I will be voting yes on this motion, and that's because, well, for many reasons, but as I think about this, in the last election cycle, I, I knocked on hundreds of doors talking with constituents about school committee members, and spoke with hundreds of constituents in most precincts. And the first question I asked people was, what issues are important to you? And over and over and over again, parents and people who don't even have kids in the school district told me, teachers are leaving, IAs are leaving, they need a good contract, they, they need to be paid well. These jobs have to be competitive. And so I get that this is an imperfect process. Of course, we cannot reallocate the money. Of course, we would make this cut in the hopes that the mayor would come back to us with an order for, to put the money in contract stabilization. Of course, we do not have that power. And of course, yeah, we are going on trust. Last meeting, Chair Prioretti said we need between 700,000 and 800,000 in contract stabilization. With adding this 300,000, it would make it between 700,000 and 800,000. And it does require some trust that that is what's needed right now. But as I think about what I want to do right now, I keep in mind that we are all elected in one way or another with this imperfect process to represent our constituents who we are elected or appointed to represent. So I'm asking, what would the voters want? And I know, having been told over and over and over again, that this, they want us to do whatever is in our power, in our limited power, to help make these positions in Greenfield competitive, both the IAs and the teachers. And right now, we have an opportunity with a limited timeframe to decide how the free cash is allocated. I agree, we should look at ledgers, we should understand what the budget looks like, that makes complete sense to me, and right now, we're voting on what to do with free cash. And I want us to be using this money and this opportunity to fund our teachers, our kids are our priority, and I would really encourage my fellow counselors to vote yes on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I had Counselor Bullock and then Vice President Gwynn.
I'm, I'm really torn on this. My, my ideal situation would be that we would table this and we would get a clear picture of what, I don't understand where that money is allocated to and like, what the rundown is going to be, so like, if the money is there, I would love to ask the superintendent why it's not willingly being allocated to, to raise, to raises or to the, to the contracts. Is there, is there a time-bound reason that we can't table this and ask for the information that we need? Or, or some kind of commitment for like, I wish the mayor was here, so that we could ask the mayor, do you plan to allocate X amount of dollars? But is there a time-bound reason that we have to vote on this tonight and that it can't be tabled until we can get financials from...
I'm going to ask Director Gilman, is this, is there a deadline on this that you're aware of?
Well, we are just starting the capital committee process, and there is 1.6 million worth of capital stabilization requests for '24. As I had stated before, it, there, there was going to be more added. So I would say, the sooner the better, you know? Voting it on in December won't be the end of the world. Capital Committee can vote, the funding is up to the mayor on capital, so capital committee, for the most part, reviews what is, they think needs to be addressed and done. So they will vote in December, so it wouldn't be the end of the world to vote on this in December.
Thank you.
Yep.
So if you feel comfortable making that motion, you're welcome to do so.
I'm not going to make the motion. I think I'm going to vote in favor of this. I understand the consequences, and I also understand that the teachers have very little ability in this moment to push forward what they need to, to sign a contract.
All right. Yes, Vice President Gwynn?
I can't believe anyone wanted to stifle this, because this is when we're doing our best work. This is really, this is what we're here for, and this is really good work. We're all over the place, and we've been talking about this for, you know, a half an hour, and it's $300,000, but there are so many good points being brought up that I want to know where the $7 million is. It has no, it, it has no bearing on the negotiation, it's the conclusion that's missing in that negotiation. The $300,000 is pretty insignificant at this moment, because it's going from capitalization to capitalization different fund. Reduce it by 300,000, come back to us and let us put the $300,000 where we want it. It doesn't matter, we're spending way too much time thinking about the 300,000. We can take that 300,000, move to two, forward for capitalization in, in, from free cash to capital stabilization, then we don't mess with capital stabilization much, and then we, that 300 is, it, once again, is a little bit of a symbol of, hey, what's going on? But at the same time, we find out what Derek was saying, is where's the 7 million? So I'm going to vote in favor of this, because I'm not going to spend any more time talking about 300,000. We're moving 6 million, like it doesn't matter, and we're talking about 300,000 for 40 minutes. But the point is, it's all good work. I'm done.
All right. On that note, are we ready to vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Enroll call, please.
So we are voting, if we, if we vote yes, we are amending the motion down from 2,500 to 2,200.
Two million.
2,200,000.
I'm sorry, say that again, please?
You said thousands, we're talking about millions.
It's 2,200,000 is, would be the amended amount.
It's getting to be close to my bedtime, what can I say? All right. That's what I meant. All right. This is, we're, we're voting on the amendment now. You requested a roll call vote. Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote, and this is whether or not to amend the motion.
Counselor Golub?
Aye.
Vice President Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Lapinski?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
That's fine. All right, so the motion...
Motion passes.
Thank you, the motion passes. The motion, okay, now the motion has been amended, so we are no longer talking about 2,500,000, we're talking about 2,200,000, and everything else remains as read by Counselor Forgé. Now we're debating that motion. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that motion as amended? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, that motion carries. All right, next. Counselor Forgé, please.
Sure. Mike?
Yep. Order number fiscal year 23-046. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wieder Gardner, in order to appropriate from free cash in the amount of $200,000 to compensated absences fund. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $200,000 from free cash to the compensated absences fund, 8450. Majority vote required.
Thank you.
This, this received a split recommendation at Ways and Means. There were three in favor and two opposed.
Okay, in that case, I'm expecting some questions and comments. Who wants to go first?
Well, has it been seconded?
It was seconded, yes.
So I, I have a question.
All right, yes.
So this, this question actually was brought up during public comment, and it piqued my interest. If in fact, the compensated absences fund was $25,000 for the last several years, and it's $200,000 now, that's an extraordinary increase. May I ask a question of Director Gilman on that? May I ask a question of Director Gilman on that?
Yes.
So, why is it increased by eight times this year?
I'm sorry, could you repeat it? I'm really having a hard time hearing people.
So, my question is, if the compensated absences fund was funded to the tune of 25,000 in previous years, why is it eight times as much now?
Okay. So, first of all, there's not a historical rationale to this. People retire or leave when they do, you know? It's not, but we do happen to know of some larger retirements. And, you know, Counselor Forgji can also speak to this, but when people have been here a while, they can leave with $50,000, one person. And so, we do anticipate some in the area of public safety. We already had veterans leave. There's just some more people coming up. So, it, you know, it makes total sense to have it. And I know that Director Warner and the fire chief have both told me that they have some large ones, might be at the beginning of next year, but still soon. So that is why the large increase.
Sure. And I, what I'm getting from this is that the compensated absences fund, while from its name implies that it's paying for vacations, that vacation time accrues and you can get a check if you retire without having used your vacations. Is that accurate?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
He was asking about vacation payout when people?
Okay. So, it's more than vacation payout. People who've been here a long time get 20% of their sick time, which can accumulate to a very large extent if you've been here for a long time. And yes, they are owed their vacation time and if they have personal time as well.
Got it. And could any of this increase be due to absences from this past year or is it only for the future?
I couldn't hear that, sorry.
Was it from the past year or only for the future?
Thanks, President.
The past year what? I'm sorry. My hard past year.
Point of order?
Yes.
We actually have some, with Director Gilman having some difficulty hearing, we do have some expertise on this Ways and Means. See Counselor Forgji with her hand up. I'm not trying to not have Director Gilman answer, but I know that she knows the answer to some of these questions.
Okay, thank you.
If you'd like to answer, go ahead.
If that's okay with Liz, I'll take it away. Compensated absences, I think everybody understands that, what this, first, we need to understand what it means. I guess that's the first thing. So contractually, people negotiate and they make the best deal they possibly can in their contracts. And some of the things that they talk about are more time instead of more money, looking for more time off, they're looking for a sick leave buyback, they're looking, in some instances, we have something in Greenfield called a time bank. All of these things have been out there forever. As long as contracts have been negotiated, there is a lot of what I would consider to be unfunded liabilities. And what this fund is trying to do is shore up against the unfunded liabilities. And idotally, if you'll bear with me for just a moment, when I first became mayor, we had a top senior department head leave, somebody who was on a career path and stayed here for quite a long period of time. The payout for this person back in 2003 was $125,000. We had no compensated absence fund. So at the time, any department head could tell you if they had somebody leaving, they're going to exhaust their budget to pay out this person that's leaving, that's retiring. And the department could not function properly. It could not move forward. In that particular instance, what we had to do was we had to negotiate with the employee, we had to split the payments into three years with interest and a signed contract so this employee could be paid what he was owed. At that particular time, we had a negative free cash of $100,000. So, there is a lot of history that goes into all of this. The city of Greenfield, to the best of my knowledge, encourages employees to take vacation and the mayor did write us a memo about this. But they also cap vacation time, which means they want you not to carry forward more than two weeks every year. Whereas in the past, if you didn't use your two, three, four weeks and you carried it forward for 40 years, that would be a large sum of money. And remember that when you are, when people are negotiating this type of an issue, they are negotiating 20% of sick leave buyback. When you start and you're making a dollar an hour, 20%, okay, is 20 cents, but you work 40 years, you're no longer making a dollar an hour, you're making a huge amount of money and it's 20% that's still owed to you. So these benefits in my, I benefited from it and everybody who's worked for the city and retired from the city or even left the city have benefited from these payouts. This is why it's, in my opinion, of utmost importance to fund this. And as Liz mentioned, there are retirements coming up. We already know that people have left. We have employees that have left. We have police department that has left. There are payouts, police officers, there are payouts to all of this. And I just want to talk one more thing about time bank. That was, in every, there is no other department that has time bank, the police department has time bank. That was negotiated way back when, where we had a board of selectmen, town manager, we didn't have enough money to pay overtime. So if somebody was going to court, for instance, to testify, they get paid to go to court to testify. Instead of paying them overtime, they set up a time bank, which said if you went to court for five hours, put five hours in your time bank. Okay, again, the principle is, when you first start, it's $1, but when you end, it might be $5. And all of those hours have increased the amount of money, the unfunded liability that the city owes to you. I don't know if time bank is still contractually going on. I do know for the older members of the police department, they do have time bank. But no other union has negotiated a time bank. Bottom line, again, it's an unfunded liability. It's a huge detriment for a department to take a hit. Bottom line, it disrupts, it causes layoffs, it is just undesirable. So going forward, it's really essential that we look at this as funding an unfunded liability. And there is no way of knowing in any given year what the absences are going to be because nobody retires from the city until they put their papers in. And it's up to them to make the decision to put their papers in. And once that process is started, then you start with the accruals and the payout that's going to happen. So it's hit or miss. Some years, it just may be, you know, 25,000. Other years, and I suspect that this is coming down the pike at this point, it's going to be a huge amount of money. And we're going to have to pay it by contract. So, thank you, that was long-winded, but I hope everybody understands the principle.
Thanks, Counselor Forgji. You answered my question and I hope that the public is more well-informed and I'm going to support this motion.
Thank you. I saw that Counselor Disorder had her hand up. Was that to speak to the motion or was that when you were trying to get my attention?
It's to speak to the motion, but I think it was Counselor Toranzo, you had your hand up also. Okay, so I'm going to support this motion and that's because I listened, I was listening to what my fellow councilors said. We had a lot of great discussion on this. It is going to be needed. And I'm just hoping that what we've seen in the past, like we've got four years' worth of this, four or five years' history of this, we just heard tonight that our DPW is also going to need this. They have in the past absorbed from their own budget, those that retired. I think they're, I'm not sure what percentage they are of the budget, but I'm going forward in good faith and voting for this 300% increase to compensated absences and I'm hoping that it's shared by all departments because that wasn't quite what I saw, but I'm a yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who had any questions or comments on this? Counselor Golub?
Yeah, I'm really torn on this and this is one of the, I won't abstain, but this is one of those times where I would consider that. Just to be clear, the reason why I voted no in committee was because, just to make that very, very clear, we got the records, it was shared with everyone, that demonstrated that at least in the last four years, DPW and the schools didn't access it. I'm not sure if actually the schools can access it, but I know that DPW did not access it. And I asked for the records to, 10 years back to get more information and the, there wasn't the capacity, understandably, to get that information. But if I had my, if I had what I wanted, there would be a policy that dictated that there would be an equitable distribution and that all workers in our town could access these funds. But given the current circumstances and given the retirements that are happening, I am going to reluctantly vote yes.
Yes, Counselor Forgji?
If I could, the more knowledge that comes out, I think the better for all of us at this particular time. It's available to?
Can you speak in here, Mike, because I want people at home to hear too.
It is available to all departments. I cannot speak for the schools because I don't know, but it is available to all citywide Again, it is, if you have a stable department in the past, I can think of some departments where we've had a number of people that have dedicated their careers to the city, then you will not see every year, somebody from that department receiving money. It's only upon leaving, if you're terminated, that, you know, all bets are off. But if you're leaving to take another job or if you're retiring, then that's where it accesses this particular thing. Now, if you have a year where, you know, it's going to be $500,000 because everybody's leaving for some reason or everybody's retiring for some reason, then we have to come back to, you know, free cash or stabilization fund and transfer money. Bottom line, the departments, again, can't do it. But it's not, I wanted to make sure that everyone understood, it's not exclusionary. It's for everybody to access. And some departments are more stable than others, so they will not have any departures or retirements. And we're going, I think there's, my sense of things right now is that there's a much younger crew in City Hall. We're hiring new people, it's a younger crew, so it may be more stable in the years going forward. But everybody, everybody can access according to their need. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Counselor Toranzo?
I just want to point out, I think it was brought up last night, I think Director Gilman had mentioned, it still has to be approved, right? Like they make a request, departments, sorry, departments make a request specifically if they need to, to you or the city, that they would be needing access to this fund, right? And you'd be, and you have to approve that, you look over what they got left. Is that correct?
She can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I can answer.
That's what she said?
Yes, Counselor Disorder, if you would answer, that'd be great.
That decision does not come to us, this is, yeah, Director Gilman is going to decide that. It's one of the few things, and it's why I had a little mental problem with this. We put things into all our contractual stabilizations, capital stabilization, regular stabilization, we get to vote on it. This one is not like that. And while there was money left in it, some departments did not get it, so.
My reason for saying that is, I mean, if we even look at the order today, we put 50 grand in there in May and that's already been exhausted. And we're halfway through the year. So I mean, well, we're not even halfway through here, we just started this fiscal year. But I, yeah, this is just one of those, for me, that's, and some previous decisions that have been made departmentally by us even, I think are going to have an effect, especially this year, on this might needing to be utilized.
So Counselor Bullock, I thought I saw your hand up and you haven't spoken to this motion yet. So I'm going to go with Counselor Bullock and then Counselor Forgji.
Thank you. I was just noting, I think that Director Warner maybe had his hand up and might have had some, did you have your hand up or were you just stretching?
I could help, I know Liz couldn't hear, but I do have.
Yeah, I thought you might have valuable information.
Yeah, I could share some, to help out with some of the information that's been talked about the last couple of nights. If you would like me to?
That would be helpful if you wanted to come up.
So, thank you, can you hear me? Everything I've heard last night in Ways and Means and everything I'm hearing tonight is completely accurate. I worked for, once Mayor Forgji went through a few of these things with my previous superintendent. So the four-year run that I took it out of my budget since I've been back, it's generally on the low side. Let's say $1,500 to $4,000. It's a lower senior employee, whether they left for whatever reason to get another job. So in the hiring process, we all know a hiring process today, it takes me a minimum of eight, nine, 10 weeks to get a new employee into a laborer's position if I have applicants. So when I was taking the $4,000 out, just for figures, they paid $900 a week. By the time I even interview, I've made that up on my budget. I'm not waiting to hire employees. Now, I can help a little bit on what's being requested this year. I can say that, first of all, a lot of times, we don't know when an employee is going to retire. Sometimes they retire out of the blue for whatever reasons. Sometimes they elect not to tip me off so I can build it in my budget the following year. I've already had one come to me and say, "I'm done July 13th, this is what I'm going to have left on the books." That's the perfect world. A lot of times, we don't know. But I also know that I have an aging workforce at the top tier and I've got young employees, there's not much in between. And what I do know in the next two to five years, I'm going to be losing hundreds of years of institutional knowledge. But some laborers have been through some things where they don't have much sick leave. Others, most of them have been very healthy. Some of my payouts are going to be upwards of 20,000 to 30,000 per employee. Then I would send an email, send a memo or request to Liz or Diana coming aboard in the future and say, "Look, I can't handle this. I can't replace the supervisor for six months because we need to pay out. He's been here 35 or even 45 years." So, I hope I could help clear that up a little bit. I don't want to take a lot of your time, I'm just trying to be helpful.
Okay, I'm going to recognize Vice President Gwynn and then we have the fire chief on, not WebEx, we don't use that anymore, on Zoom. So, Vice President Gwynn first and Chief Strand.
Director, I just want a point of clarification from you. The process that you just started to explain, where you pay for some directly and then there's The process that you just started to explain, where you pay for some directly, and then there's others that you request, you know, to be paid by this fund, or you don't really care where it comes from, you just can't afford it in your department, and it needs to get paid. How's that determined, who gets that money? 'Cause, you know, I've, I've seen that you're taking money out of your budget when there's money still in the fund. You know, so, I, I guess I don't understand that process, and maybe someone can tell me how that's determined.
So, to clarify, in some of the cases, I've actually said this to Liz, I'm not gonna be able to hire an employee for 10 weeks. I only owe this person that's leaving us four or five weeks' pay. So, I would say I don't need the, the fund. And I think the big increase this year, I don't know all the names, but I know of others that are retiring without the city, and that's why this number is pushed up, because it literally can cripple a department, depending on who it is and how long they've been here. We paid out a 50-year employee seven years ago.
So, can they refuse to pay it from the, the mayor's side and say to you, "You know what? I know it's a 50-year employee, but I don't wanna use my fund, pay it out of your department." Can that happen?
Yes, it can, but normally, it's worded in a different way. Can you go through all your salary li, no, honestly, go through your, your other salary lines, is there anything we can transfer into that particular salary line to help? And I've always done that, I've always looked anyways, and, and, but if I need it, I, I will say I need it. Now, obviously, if the fund has been run down and isn't there, we'd have to find other ways.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting when the fund's empty, because then it's empty. I just didn't know if there was, you know, right of first refusal, you know? Figure it out, you know what I mean, so, thank you.
I mean, before I do the EAS, I always look through my budget and say, "What am I gonna need?" So.
All right, and then I think the Fire Chief wanted to add, and then I'll go to Councilor Lipinski afterwards.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, I just wanna echo a little bit about what the Director Warner said. We do our best to, um, budget very closely all our numbers within our, within our department budgets, and they're very close. One of the things that's challenging for us is when somebody retires, and a lot of times, we don't know that that individual's gonna retire, they move on to a different job, or it's just becomes at the end of their career and they're gonna retire. So, for example, last year, I had two tenants, uh, that left the job, that we didn't budget for. And the way that we made it up is we didn't hire people right away, which was detrimental to my overtime account. Since I put the budget together, remember, we put the budget together a good year ahead of time? Six months to a year ahead of time? Since last year's budget, I've been told that I have a retirement coming in June, which is at the end of my budget cycle. And there's no way that, without some pretty, uh, pretty dramatic cuts, that I'll be able to absorb that this year. Some years, we're able to absorb the buyback, um, but, but with the budgets as tight as they've been the last few years, it's been very tight to be able to do that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I recognized Councilor Lipinski next, and then we'll go to Councilor Bullock.
So, so, uh, let's see. I've been so sleep deprived lately, I'm having trouble remembering my question, but it had to do with, uh, oh, so, in that event, someone has a, a big retirement payout, the department can't afford it. Could the mayor, and this is in the event that the compensated absences fund didn't have the money, could the mayor simply ask the council for a separate appropriation to cover that? So, I think theoretically- Yes.
I'm sorry? Yeah, clerk's gotta say that there's the reserve fund transfer, but, um, yeah, and, and the mayor can come to us with an appropriation if there's ever, you know, an emergency that needed to be covered.
Right, so in other words, if a department was going to have those kinds of detrimental effects, and the mayor understood that and wanted to make sure that that didn't happen, she could come to us with an additional request, and we could see that it was a need, we could grant it, we could even do so on a short basis. And I have no problem with the compensated absences fund, I just wanted to put that out there, that that's another means that we could cover it.
Okay, thank you. I had, uh, Councilor Bullock, and then Councilor Healy after that.
Yeah, I, this, I don't know if this question is for Liz or, or Director Warner, if you can answer it, but, so, if what I'm understanding is correct, then there isn't an actual, like, cross-departmental policy on how you access uncompensated absences?
There is.
There is.
Oh, sorry, okay, I'll go. So, I have routine conversations with departments throughout the entire year. And when they're having trouble and they don't think they'll make it, we'll look at the budget and see how close it is. And the bottom line is, we don't wanna hurt services, and we also don't wanna, wanna run a deficit, because if we run a deficit, then we have to raise it on the taxes the following year.
Yeah, I think my concern here, like, combined with what Councilor Goleb shared, that she looked back at which departments are receiving uncompensated absences, and understanding that there might be some department heads that are, that are holding off on hiring, which is detrimental, like, it's not fair to a department that you have to, that, that, I mean, it's great that you're being appropriate and aware of your budget, congra, thank you. And it's not fair that, like, it, it's just not sound, like, I hire people at work. It's not sound to say, "When someone leaves, I have to wait three months or five months to hire someone."
Believe me, a department head is not afraid to say something.
Yeah, I guess what I'm wishing, and I know this won't, this meet, this-
And, and Counselor, there isn't rhyme or reason to when people retire. I guess I just don't understand why, what department and who retires. And I believe Director Warner explained to you that he has more of, a lot more turnover in his department, and they just don't accumulate the time and payouts. And by the time he hires someone, he's almost recovered, uh, the amount that was paid out.
Yeah, I guess what I'm, what I'm wishing is that we had a policy that clearly laid out, like, that uncompensated absences were like, first come, first served by any department, and then you, then you deal with budgets. Or that there was some process by which we could be clear that, that departments are having equity in access to uncompensated absences.
It certainly isn't first come, first served.
Yeah, that, I, I-
It gets down to the fact, and that, that's kind of a silly policy to have.
I, I wasn't proposing that policy, I was just saying that's like, like, any policy, to be clear on how it's being utilized.
Sorry, I missed that last part. I, I'll just go, uh, again, that it gets down to operations, can they operate without it? And, and if they can, then we will try and cover it within the budget. If they can't, then they might need a transfer. And this fund has been around for a long time.
Yeah, I'm not questioning the fund, I'm questioning the subjectiveness of how it's allocated, if there's not a clear policy. And I'm not questioning you, Liz. I'm, in general, I'm questioning the, the lack of policy.
The bottom line approach is the way to go. It's the bottom line of all budgets. Any budget, whether you're talking school, whether you're talking the city, it's the bottom line that matters.
Sorry, uh, Counselor Elmer, um, was it there's, no, I'm sorry, Counselor Healy, I thought there was someone. Then Counselor Elmer.
Sure, I'd just like to say, you know, this, this $200,000 is to try to avoid this whole situation, right? So, we're putting this money in there to be prepared for these retirements, so we don't have to have these awkward conversations later on. You know, and, and I believe a lot of us councilors have good enough relationships with department heads, where if they felt they were being treated unfairly by the mayor, they wouldn't hesitate to reach out to us either. I also like to say, I'd like to avoid having to appropriate money later on down the road, where, you know, look at the, the process for this, it's gotta be two public readings, and it's months before these things go through. So, if somebody retires, they're owed that money fairly soon, I would imagine, right? How, how soon do you have to pay out that money?
Next paycheck.
Next paycheck, right, so, that money needs to be there, I can't wait two months for another appropriation, 'cause those things take time.
Closer to three months.
Yeah.
With cutoffs, I'm just telling you.
So, so, I'm gonna support this, and I, I, I think, um, like I said, with the department heads, if they ever felt like they were being treated unfairly, and feel free to reach out to any of us councilors, and we'll go ask the mayor what the logic was, we're here to support them as well. Thank you.
All right, I had Counselor Elmer next.
Yeah, I, I, this is one of the ones where I think we've, we're overthinking it. It's a, there's a certain amount of randomness in retirement, and, and we really can't have a policy when it's, when there's randomness. So, I'm a yes, and maybe we can just move forward.
All right, any other questions or comments? Are we ready to vote? Okay, in that case, all of, yes, you can go, Director Warner. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries. And then, oh, we're on the last one for the stage.
Uh, Order Number Fiscal Year 23-048, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wieder Gardner, in order to appropriate from free cash in the amount of $100,000 to general stabilization, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $100,000 from free cash to the General Stabilization Fund 8400, majority vote required.
Counselor, you're on the wrong order.
Yeah, that was, that was probably my fault, because I thought we were on the last one.
No, no, there's-
We're on page 36.
FY 23047.
What, what are we on?
Five, 36. Sorry.
36, Mike.
Yeah, page 36.
We're on item five, the second $200,000.
That doesn't, in that, excuse me.
So, this one's $200,000 from free cash to-
Didn't we just vote contract stabilization?
No, compensated absences.
Oh, gosh, thank you, it's getting late, okay, I apologize.
They feel very similar, don't they?
Yeah, they do. Fiscal Year 23-047, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wieder Gardner, in order to appropriate from free cash the amount of $200,000 to contract stabilization, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriates the sum of $200,000 from free cash to the Contract Stabilization Fund 8403, majority vote required.
Second.
This, uh, this received, unanimous, positive recommendation.
Wonderful. Are there any questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right.
Okay, now we can do-
Bringing up the average now.
Fiscal Year 23-048, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wieder Gardner, in order to appropriate from free cash in the amount of $100,000 to general stabilization, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $100,000 from free cash to the General Stabilization Fund 8400, majority vote required.
Do I, okay, and a report from committee?
Uh, it was a unanimous vote.
I, excuse me.
All right. Counselor Goleb?
Thank you, I'm sorry. I believe that this is actually superfluous and no longer relevant. Because, and we did, you're right, you're right, Counselor Forgé, that we did vote unanimously. But let me explain, I think, I think this might be in, a mistake in including this in the agenda, because, um, trying to be succinct, two meetings ago, we tabled the police audit, and this references that the police audit was tabled. In the last, uh, meeting, we voted to not do the police audit, and the rationale of this order is to put the money into general stabilization to fund the police audit, which is not going to happen. And then, in, on page, I believe, 101, there is an order to fund, to put $100,000, the same amount, into contract stabilization, and the rationale for that is that the police audit was not passed. And so, in, the money that would've gone to the police audit, that would've been in general stabilization from the order that we're looking at right now, is being asked to actually be put into contact, contract stabilization.
So, I understand, um, I, I understand what you're saying. The mayor has not withdrawn this order. If folks would be more comfortable tabling this, to see if we can get clarification, that's an option? Or without objection, it could be moved to the December meeting? Yes.
Um, I just didn't know, since we got Liz, if she could clarify whether or not this was left in on purpose. Because though I understand what you're saying, that this was going hand in hand with, with the idea of the audit, this money wasn't to fund the audit. This money is to be put into stabilization, which in a separate order would've been pulled out of stabilization to fund the audit. So, I just didn't know if Liz could easily clarify this, on whether or not this was supposed to just stay in stabilization, or?
So, um, it, it is correct, and I, I believe I wrote on the financial orders, that the first one to general was dependent on the police audit, we were basically replacing that money. And after that failed, I submitted a second order that will be, second reading is in December, to therefore put that in contract stabilization. So, you could table it for eternity, or, or vote it down.
But, so that, just to clarify, this was the same, 'cause I know not all of the free cash was, um, necessarily put into orders yet, right?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
At, at last month's meeting, and even including the stuff that's going in today, that's not accounting for all of the free cash yet, right? There's still gonna be a, a free cash balance?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we, we aren't going to, right, correct.
Okay, okay. I was just making sure that, just to clarify, 'cause I knew what you were, what Counselor Goleb was talking about, I just wanted to make sure that, even though we got rid of the, the audit, that the intention still wasn't to put $100,000 into general stabilization. That was all.
Okay, I saw Counselor Lipinski first, and then I saw a close tie between Vice President Gwynn and Counselor DeSorger.
The trio.
So, um, this is, I'm, I'm gonna speak into the mic and clearly, so that Liz Gilman can hear this clarifying question. Is it the case that instead of funding the police audit, we're putting $100,000 into contract stabilization, and therefore, we are replacing the $100,000 that we are going to take out of the general fund?
No.
No?
You're close, you're close.
Okay, explain it to me.
But originally, the police audit was coming out of general stabilization, that, that original order, and it was tabled for so long, um, when free cash was certified, I put in the order to replace it, contingent on the police audit passing. It didn't pass, so therefore, I submitted another order and said, "Okay, we'll, we'll put another 100 in contract stabilization, and that one will be voted on in December."
Oh, I see, they both come out of free cash, so-
They, they, well, one of them isn't gonna come out of, the general isn't gonna come out of free cash, because you voted down the audit. Yeah.
It, it says, "An order to appropriate from free cash to general stabilization."
Correct, and that was at the time, long time ago, where the police audit was tabled for a long, long time.
So, order number-
To replace that, so you can vote, you can table this, you can vote it down, that's fine, if you wanna wait to December, it's fine, and it can go hand in hand with a second vote on the contract stabilization?
Well, I think I've come to my conclusion, I think we should vote it- Well, I think I've come to my conclusion. I think we should vote it down. I'm going to be a no.
Okay, okay.
All right, Vice President Quinn, and then Counselor Disorga.
On recommendation of the Finance Director, if we vote this down, it's gone. It, it can come back in a, some, if it's needed later. Let's just vote this and, and move on.
Counselor Disorga?
I'm with him.
All right, so, in that case, are we ready to vote? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Withdrawn.
All opposed?
No.
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right. All right, next is, yeah.
Fiscal year 23-050, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weider Gardner, and in accordance with Massachusetts general law, moved that it be ordered, ordered that the sum of $107,300 be transferred from free cash to the fiscal year 23 general fund vehicle fuel accounts as follows. 0100, 2100, .5482, police, no leaded gas, no lead gas, $12,300. 0100, 2200, .5482, fire fuel, $24,000. 0100, 4290, .5482, DPW service gas, $20,000. 0100, 4290, .5483, DPW service diesel, $5,000. 0100, 4330, .5482, DPW solid waste gas, $1,000. 0100, 4330, .5482, DPW solid waste diesel, $40,000. 0100, 1920, .5482, central maintenance gas, $5,000. Total, $107,0300, majority vote required.
Second.
Great. And a report from committee, please?
It was unanimous positive recommendation.
Questions or comments? Counselor Lapienski?
Yeah, so, I'm going to make a motion to amend, and I, I want to give a very brief explanation why. It has to do with the police department running their vehicles. And I, I just want to say, without getting into details, the police have been at my house, not having to do with me, numerous times over the last couple of weeks. They have been very professional, they've done their job, but they leave their vehicles running no matter how long they're there, 45 minutes, two hours, and they are wasting the taxpayers' money in doing so. Even as they're doing a good job as individuals, I move that we reduce this amount by $12,300. If we have Mayo on the line, I can get a second.
I don't see anyone else who's seconding, so?
Never mind, we'll, we'll throw away the money.
All right, were there any other questions or comments about this motion? So, Counselor Forgie, did I see your hand go up out of the, I was looking around, I thought I saw you movement out of the corner of my eye. I guess that's a no. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion carries. All right, next.
Fiscal year 23-051, City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weider Gardner, and in accordance with Massachusetts general law, moved that it be ordered, ordered that the sum of $8,500 be appropriated from sewer retained earnings to the following fiscal year 23 sewer fuel accounts. Fiscal year 23, 6000, 4290, .5482, sewer gas, $2,500. 6000, 4290, .5483, sewer diesel, $6,000. Total, $8,500, majority vote required.
Second.
Report from committee?
A recommendation of unanimous positive.
Great, questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Oh, that's okay. All right, everyone, so that was unanimous positive. Great. Next.
Fiscal year 23-02, 052, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weider Gardner, in accordance with Massachusetts general law, moved that it be ordered, ordered that the sum of $10,000 be appropriated from water retained earnings to the following fiscal year 23 water vehicle fuel accounts. 6100, 4290, .5482, water gas, $5,000. 6100, 4291, .5483, water diesel, $5,000. Total, $10,000.
Second.
It was a unanimous positive recommendation.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Fiscal year 23-053, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weider Gardner, and in accordance with Massachusetts general law, fiscal year 22 reserve fund transfer request, moved that it be ordered, ordered that the sum of $14,387 be transferred from the fiscal year 22 0100, 1320, .5781 Reserve Fund to fiscal year weights and measures contracted services account 0100, 2440, .5200. Positive unanimous recommendation.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Point of order. By policy, we have to take a five-minute break.
Let's do that.
Let's not do that. Let's not do that.
Just pull like a thorn on us with that thing.
Back to work, back to work. All right, so now we are going to talk about whether or not we're going to rescind borrowing authorities. And that's on page fifty-six.
Just so everybody agrees, we're at Fiscal Year 23-073? Okay, great, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weider Gardner, second order to rescind library borrowing authority, ordered that, upon recommendation of Mayor Weider Gardner, vote to rescind the following borrowing authorization by five hundred thousand dollars. Revised authorization reduces the total to eighteen million, five hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and ninety-six.
Five hundred and forty-one thousand.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry, so let me say that again, eighteen million, five hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-six. Majority vote required.
All right, what's the report from committee?
We see unanimous.
Yep.
Great, are there any questions or comments? Okay, yes.
I have a fresh comment, I have a fresh comment, I'd just like.
Can I get you to put your mic on?
Yes, I would just like to point out that we can rescind borrowing without re-borrowing, that was my fresh comment.
Thank you, yes, Counsel Lapienski?
On that note, I would like to thank the mayor and Liz Gilman for letting us do that, because we don't get to do it unless they give it to us, and a lot of the time they don't give us what we want to vote on, but this time they did. So you are correct, Counsel Disorger, that they are letting us do it, and that's how we know we can, let's go ahead and do it.
All right. All right, I think we need another break, gosh, guys. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries. All right, now, who's reading the resolution?
Catherine.
All right, everyone get comfy.
It's like bedtime stories, I'll try to make it like that. All right.
Oh, so the clerk is telling me that you just have to read the motion, not the entire resolution.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you, Kathy. Okay, so order number Fiscal Year 23-066, the City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the tax resolution titled "A Resolution to Urge the Massachusetts General Court to Pass H. 3053, An Act Relative to Tax Deeds" as filed in the 192nd session, majority vote required.
Second.
All right, do we have a report, we don't, we don't have a report from committee, okay. So, are there any questions or comments about the resolution? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion passes.
Unanimously.
unanimous. All right. All right.
Without objection, I would like to ask the President and the Council to move the next four items to the December agenda.
I agree, are there any objections? All right, those are moved.
I, I don't object, but will the Vice President explain why for the public?
Sure, A and O was canceled because of the health of our clerk and trying to put together the A and O meeting, so A and O did not meet, so these things weren't changed, worked on, they're still in committee level, but the agenda was already done, so we'll work on them in December and then move them forward in the December agenda.
Thank you for that.
And the same does not apply to the appointments, because if we don't vote on the appointments, they don't go through, so this gives us an opportunity. And on that note, if you would read the appointments.
I move that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointments and reappointments by the mayor as follows. Appointments: Commission on Disability Access, Lynn Kelly, moving from full member to alternate, term expires December 31, 2025. Human Rights Commission, Grady Ver Plank, term expires December 31, 2024. Mayor's Task Force Against Domestic Violence, Katie Rose Warren, representative of Franklin County District Attorney's Office designated by the FC District Attorney, two-year term per charter, term expires December 31, 2024. Reappointments: Board of License Commissioners, Alan Ball, term expires December 31, 2025. Cemetery Commission, Jeffrey Hampton, term expires December 31, 2025. Conservation Commission, Kristen McDonough, I think, Eric LaForme, term expires December 31, 2025. Constables, Peter Clark and Joseph Le Chance, term expires December 31, 2025. Council on Aging, Randy Handelman, Janice Colbert, and Margot Peck, term expires December 31, 2025. Franklin County Technical School Committee, Paul Doran, term expires December 31, 2025. Historical Commission, Robert Moorhead, term expires December 31, 2025. Mayor's Task Force Against Domestic Violence, Lana Gerjoy, term expires December 31, 2025. Parking and Traffic Commission, Sebastian Gutwin and Jean Wall, term expires December 31, 2025. Planning and Construction, Nancy Hazard, term expires December 31, 2025. Public Library Board of Trustees, Doris Cowdery and Samantha Wood, term expires December 31, 2025. Recreation Commission, Heather Valenta, alternate, and Barb Zaccio, term expires December 31, 2025. Retirement Board, Mary Ann Fisk, term expires December 31, 2025. Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee, Hannah Rech.
Rechshafen.
That's exactly what I was saying. And Jonah Keen, term expires December 31, 2025.
Great.
So there is no recommendation, as these weren't brought up before the committee, but I will say I received no communications from any counselor questioning any of the candidates or looking for further explanation as to why they were appointed or reappointed.
Great, any questions or comments? All right, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a quick comment. I'm delighted about all these people, I know many of them, I serve on disability access, we're, we've just lost two members, just out into TV land and the audience here, anyone, especially, anyone of any age, but especially if you're retired, it's one Thursday a month on Zoom in an afternoon, and we really could use a hand.
Thank you.
And we do appreciate from A and O, all the people that step forward to do these committees, because we need all this, this work, and we usually thank them and ask them to talk, and something you see here all the time, so we appreciate it.
All right, anything further? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, presentation, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Presentation of petitions and similar papers. Do any committee chairs want to give a report of their committee? All right, do we have any unfinished business? Do we have any old business? We have new business. We have a first reading.
City Council First Reading, November 16, 2022, repurpose sixty-seven thousand, sixty-seven thousand, oh sixty-one, point five one, from school department capital accounts for school phone system, appropriate one hundred thousand from free cash to contract stabilization fund, eight four oh three.
Point of clarification, I'm not sure that number was absolutely correct, just if we could reiterate the sixty-seven thousand, sixty dollars and fifty-one cents.
Okay, thank you. Not my night, to repurpose sixty-seven thousand and sixty dollars and fifty-one cents from school department capital accounts for school phone system.
Thank you. All right, any motions for reconsideration? Do we have a motion to adjourn? I'm sorry, did we have something else? I'm sorry, I crossed it off while we were talking.
She read that.
Did we read that one?
She did read it.
Okay.
All right, so, motions of reconsideration. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, see you next month, folks.
Who has the tax class document?